I'll rise to the House of Lords.
My allegiance is to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Spanish translation tonight?
Yes, we have Alma Flores. Alma, would you please come forward, introduce yourself?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alma Flores y estoy aquí para traducir. Si necesita los servicios de un intérprete, estará sentada en la parte de atrás.
Gracias. Noting that there's headsets for the hearing impaired, and more can be found out about it on the screen over here. Announcements of closed session items. I have three announcements. Liability claim listed under B2. We had a motion by Harder, seconded by Parker. It was a five-zero. We, how do you say that? We denied, thank you, the claim. On B3, also liability claim, and it was a motion by Harder, seconded by Cordero, and it was denied five-zero as well. On, I'm going out of order because we went out of order. On B1, we voted to conclude the current unsuccessful search process for the business services position. It was a motion by Harder, seconded by Cordero, and we voted five-zero to do that. Okay. Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Harder and Cordero.
May I note that we have a representative from Rabobank with us tonight, and that was the first donation, the 25 computers at Adams School on that list.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, very nice.
Yes.
And that representative is Ed Heron.
Thank you. Okay, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions?
Well, we do have two presentations tonight. First, we've talked about ways to engage students and help them avoid the lure of gangs. We've also talked about how adults on campus are a powerful force in making a difference in the lives of our students. Well, I'm delighted to showcase one of those connections tonight. Tonight, we have Alejandra Gutierrez, who along with Pedro Manchaca is co-advisor of the Dawn Riders, a lowrider bicycle club at Santa Barbara High School. Alejandra, would you come up to the microphone, please? Alejandra will tell us about the club and the club members, several of whom are in the recent Santa Barbara International Film Festival documentary and are with us this evening. Before Alejandra takes the mic, I'd like to note that in addition to working as the Career Center Technician, she's also the advisor for TIA, which means Aunt in Spanish, a mentor program for young women at Santa Barbara High School. Alejandra?
Good afternoon. I have been working at Santa Barbara High School for about a year and a half. I was born and raised in Santa Barbara. I got the opportunity to work with the students you see here. They're just some of the students in the Dawn Riders. It's a lowrider bike club, and we are the first ASB, under the ASB umbrella, lowrider bike club in California. These, the students are required to maintain a 2.0 GPA. If they go below a 2.0, we help them raise those grades and attendance. Our big priority is academics. And Mr. Manchaca thought of a great idea of getting the students that didn't feel part of the community and part of the school community engaged in art. And something that is very popular in among the Mexican-American culture are lowrider bicycles and the lowrider cars. It's a great form of keeping the culture alive and a great form to keeping the students active in the community. So in order to participate in this, in this club, it is a privilege, and the students know that. And their priorities are education. The students have gone to conferences at UCSB. They have guest speakers coming every Tuesday, and, sorry, I'm really nervous. Our goal as advisors is to prepare the students to become leaders in the community. They're the first lowrider club in the state of California and in Santa Barbara. Our goal is to have San Marcos and DP start a lowrider bike club and eventually engage other students from other communities together so those borders can break down. Because really, borders are the ones we make. And the students know that, so by learning leadership skills and going out there and being exposed to the community can help, you know, the newly freshmen to look, have something to look up to. The ones that really might not feel involved or engaged in the high school environment. And some of the students are?
Carlos Sonia?
Maddie Hernandez, and I'm the treasurer in the Santa Barbara Dawn Riders.
My name is Jorge Bernard.
Hi, I'm Lester Higa.
I'm Selena Jaime.
Hi, I'm Alex Chavez.
Hi, I'm Xavier Caniones.
Hi, I'm Victor Mesa.
All right, very good. Ms. Malakoff?
Can you tell us something about these awesome bikes? They are just amazing. Somebody?
All the students talk about their, about the bikes.
All right, well, this black bike right here is my bike. Costs a lot, but...
How long does it take you to do this?
It's a lot of commitment to the bike. You have to be very committed to have a lowrider bike, take care of a lowrider bike, build the lowrider bike. And it's a lot of work to take care of this bike. I'm not sure how long it takes you to like build a bike, but like it'll probably take me, I'd say about three hours to build a bike. And that's all I gotta say.
Did you build the frame from scratch?
No, there's a, well, what is it?
Well, there's websites where you can look up the cruisers or, you know, regular frames, and you can buy them like that. Or you can make your own frame, but that messes a lot with angles and tubing and all that stuff, bending. It's just a lot of work, so it's better to just either get a regular cruiser or buy the frame and add stuff you want to. There's some people that weld the sides and make it look like it's part of the bike and do murals on it. Anything you really want to do to it, you know?
So once you buy the frame, it's a completely custom bike?
No. Well, you have to, in order to be like a custom bike, you have to put the rims, which is what stands out more.
Yeah.
And maybe the handlebars and the forks, which is like the suspension of the bike that makes it lower. And there's like spare tires. There's horns, there's, there's everything, pretty much a car, but in a little bike.
And this, and this frame, the twisted steel frame, that?
Oh, that's how you buy it. There's, there's people that actually have all the equipment and all the tools to twist the metal and bend it and do whatever they feel like doing to the frame as long as it works.
So you're gonna ride them for us?
Huh?
Through the tables, this could spin around the room.
You may have seen this club in, in our parades this winter, and you'll see them in future parades as well.
That's right. There's, there's a lot of bikes, and hopefully we get new members and we get people to join, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Something I do want to mention, the students worked on a documentary, and it was entered in the San Barbara Film Festival, which was shown. We were accepted. And it was a great honor. The whole purpose of the documentary was to educate the community about this club and break down the stereotypes of youth and the lowrider culture and to show the other side of the coin. I could come, I could talk for hours on, you know, each student and how great they are, but I work with them on a daily basis, so I really get to see the other side. And I think that the best investment that we could do in our community is in our youth because they're, they are eventually going to take your positions. And I think if we could show the community and educate them in a subject that they might be ignorant about, will change a lot of, will break down a lot of stereotypes. We are working on a date to show the documentary at Santa Barbara High School, and we'll let everybody know.
Oh, that'd be great. That'd be wonderful. Thank you for coming tonight.
I was just wondering if I could ask a quick question. I was wondering if any of the students would want to comment on how being involved in this club affects your, your academic commitments? Don't all jump at once.
Can I take the mic? Okay, well, my freshman year, I was like a bad girl, getting As, I mean, getting Fs and everything. And this year, since I joined the club, like it helped me out a lot. I have As, Bs, and Cs. I'm doing pretty good. I have like a three-point something GPA, and I'm doing really good now. And it's like, since I'm going to the leadership meetings over at university, I'm like wanting more to go to college and everything, and since I want to become a nurse, just try to get like a couple of advices from them and everything, since they already know like what everything's about. I'm trying to achieve that and try to do good and prevent other people like joining gangs and everything. And pretty much.
Basically, the reason I got into this bike club is because I just, like at first, like I just liked to build bikes, and I liked them since I was a kid. And it's been helping me because I've been found out since I joined this club that there's opportunities for like scholarships for, like it's not just the bike club, but it helps you for like scholarships and like talks about like when you get out of high school. So that's one of the reasons I just, I picked it up, and I just like, I just liked it. So that's pretty much.
Well, the reason I joined this club was because my friend told me about it in freshman year, and it sounded pretty good, so I joined it. And also, I always had tardies and didn't go to class. My trucker always calls me up in his office. He always talks about me, about my tardies and my attendance. So he got me into going to class every time, making sure I do. And ever since I started ditching with my friends, I started doing better in school, got my grades up, now I have a three-point, over a 3.0, I'm not sure what it is right now. But staying up for sure, and that's pretty much that's it.
Well, I joined this club because I've been around bikes when I was a kid because of my brother, and something I was interested in, and it helps me keep my grades up and stay good in school. It's fun, I guess.
So, yeah. This club really helps me to get my grades up because there's lots of things that you can miss out if you have bad grades, and I don't want to miss out on anything important that the club has something to do with. So I try to keep my grades up, and that's how it helps me. I joined this club because my uncle, I've been around my uncle a lot, and he made bikes and cars and all that stuff, and I was interested in bikes. And I saw this club, and I wanted, liked, and I wanted to join it. And it helps me for like, keeps my grades up. They want to encourage me to do other stuff in life and like, just keep my grades up.
Well, I joined this club because I've been into lowrider bikes since I was a little kid because of my cousins. I always looked up to them because they would always be riding them around, and I wouldn't have one. And now I had a chance to get one. And this club helps me keep my grades up, and that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, students. Alejandra?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gutierrez, I just want to share with you and your students, well, 5:00 on Saturday afternoon on Channel 18. So it would be a little bit after 5:00 because we get started late, but they televise the broadcast. So if you want to see yourself or tape it or whatever, yeah, to share with other members of the club, okay.
Well, we do, we do have one other presentation tonight. Nancy Weiss has been selected as the new director of our Nutrition Services Department. And Nancy, I'd like you to come up to the podium while I brag on you. Nancy has more than 20 years of experience in food service. She was a founder, owner, and operator of Soho Restaurant for 13 years. She joined the district's, and her life's gone up since then. She joined the district's food service team in 1996, working as the food service coordinator and kitchen manager at Galita Valley Junior High School. I want you to see this picture because while at Galita Valley Junior High, she organized and implemented an after-school cooking club, teaching basic culinary skills as well as math and nutrition to hundreds of students. In fact, she was at Galita Valley today teaching the after-school cooking club. In November 2007, Nancy began work as the interim director of Nutrition Services. We have all been totally impressed. In the position, she eliminated as much commodity processed prepackaged foods as possible in favor of more nutritious meals. Nutrition Services is now preparing more food from scratch, using whole grains and fresh produce, and providing more chicken, turkey, fish, and rice and beans as protein sources. In selecting Nancy, we're taking a major step forward toward transforming our Nutrition Services program. We're restructuring and moving away from the packaged and processed foods to foods that have a higher nutritional value and provide greater health benefits. We know these foods will be a little more expensive, or perhaps the preparation will be a little more expensive, but we want our Nutrition Services program to be the best health-driven program in the nation. And you notice, Nancy is nodding her head.
So did you bring the, so, did you do the Braised Boar Shank at So?
No.
Is that one of yours?
No, that was after me.
Because that ought to come to the school.
Oh, right, here we go. Boar for everybody.
We will.
Yeah, I don't know how that'll go over, but...
As you will hear, Nancy is passionate about these goals, and I have every confidence that she's going to lead that transformation. It's good to have you on board, Nancy.
Thank you, Dr. Service. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Yes, I am, I'm thrilled and honored and very excited about the direction that I am going to take our Department of Nutrition Services. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you. I know we've all gotten emails of parents who are so happy to have you on board, so we're looking forward. Yeah, I feel like we're going in the right direction.
And we really and truly can call you Chef Nancy.
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
Yes, you can. Well, here you have it.
There we have it.
Thanks, Barbara. Thank you, everybody.
Shall I go on to the superintendent's report? I do have a number of items. On January 3, 1st, the city convened a community stakeholder meeting on, to identify ways to improve communication, coordination, and collaboration on youth violence issues. Forty agencies and service providers were presented, including the Santa Barbara School Districts. Like other agencies, our district was active in working on youth violence and gangs long before last year's stabbing. We took its steps immediately after the stabbing, took additional steps this last spring and this fall. The group will meet regularly to work on three outcomes identified at the meeting. The first is that the city will convene a group of community leaders to prepare a strategic plan to comprehensively address youth violence issues. There are a lot of agencies doing a lot of things, which leads to the second, which is a comprehensive directory of youth and family service providers, which will be made available to improve services. And third, we all committed service providers and government agencies to take steps to reduce bureaucracy and working together to assist at-risk youth. Related to that, at a previous board, well, actually at a couple of previous board meetings, we've discussed the State School Community Violence Prevention Grant. As the board knows, the district does not qualify for funding since we don't demonstrate sufficient need for the grant, as we do not exceed state averages on the Healthy Kids Survey regarding such factors as gang membership and students feeling safe at school. And that is why it's not on tonight's agenda as we thought it would be. However, there will be other grants in the future, and we'll be looking at other funding sources, such as Safe Schools and Healthy Students Grants. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area or can be provided through my office. The February 1st Board Brief was packed with items and information. I'll highlight only three of them. Seem to be more and more. But I believe you said that it was quite useful?
I said it was a very good one.
Oh, right. First of all, the board saw an update on the use of additional money for junior high electives. Secondly, the board also saw a memo on textbook adoption cycles, explaining why the elementary district is still playing catch-up on adopting history, social science last spring, and is in the process of selecting science materials now. This is because our annual cost in the elementary district of consumable materials for English, language, arts, and math is over $200,000, and that gobbles up a lot of our money. As a result, we have to save instructional materials money and restricted lottery funding for two years in order to purchase a new adoption. And a lot of districts are faced with that. It's not uncommon to have to save over a two-year period to be able to adopt a new series. Finally, the new projections by the county education office, as requested by Eric Smith, on the, on the possibility of the secondary district crossing the threshold of basic aid were shown. The projections show, given current assumptions about declines in student enrollment, about the lack of state funding in the future, that we may be crossing that threshold as early as four years from now, in the year 2011, 2012. That's in our secondary district, and we'll certainly be watching this closely. Well, Santa Barbara High School's Tony Johnson won the Santa Barbara International Film Festival's High School 10-10-10 Student Filmmaker Competition, and Santa Barbara High School student, Michael Bagdusarian, won the festival's 10-10-10 Student Script Writing category. And we have a photo of the next, last week, there was an unveiling of the beautiful new tile wall at Dos Pueblos High School's pool. And I see Nancy Harder there as, as one of the people against the wall. And I think we have another photo, Dave. It's a beautiful addition to an outstanding facility. And there, of course, in the middle is Virgil Ehlings and Betty Ehlings Wells, who are major contributors to this project, and put it over the top. Well, we just received word that Dos Pueblos High School had a tremendous second place showing at the Science Bowl at Cal State Bakersfield on Saturday. According to an article in yesterday's Bakersfield Californian, Dos Pueblos was a tough competitor as teams from a dozen communities went mano a mano in science. And we have another photo. While many diversity-related activities take place throughout the year, Diversity and Equity Awareness Week is happening in our junior high and high schools this month. The high schools held a number of activities on February 4 through 8 with some serious discussions and some fun-filled activities. I'd like you to notice all the white flower spots behind Jamie DeVries there. And let's see, Jamie was wearing the, I believe it was sexism, poncho. Let's see. Santa Barbara Junior High is celebrating this week, and three other junior high schools are planning activities on, for February 25th through 29th. A sampling of activities for February is in the coming up page at the back of the room, and board members, I believe you have a copy of that as well. Santa Barbara High School's Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program is underway. This is a wonderful experience for the students and an exceptional service to the community. I know we've had these students in front of the board before. I think they annually serve over 600 people in filing tax returns. Harding Elementary School will receive the Looking Good Santa Barbara's Outstanding School Environment Program Award on March 6th. So many of us will be attending that event. And coming up in the days ahead, and board members, you have a copy of this, we have Santa Barbara High's jazz ensembles, which will perform at Soho, wouldn't you figure? Next Monday, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Our districts are joint sponsors on a discussion on closing the achievement gap with the League of Women Voters. The league will host a February 20 noon forum on the topic. San Marcos's High, San Marcos High School's Performing Arts Royal Blue Review will take place on February 21st through 22nd at 7:00 p.m. The Santa Barbara High School District's Honor Band will perform at La Cumbre Junior High School on February 21st. Santa Barbara Junior High is looking for graduates, former teachers, and administrators to celebrate the school's March 8 celebration of 75 years of service to the community. Give Santa Barbara Junior High a call. They want you. And San Marcos High School will also celebrate its 50th anniversary on the same day, on March 8. Well, two final announcements. Saninaz Union High School District has offered their superintendent position to Paul Turnbull. It is effective June 16. Paul, congratulations. We will miss you. And finally, we offer congratulations to Franklin Principal Carol Navarez. Carol gave birth to a healthy baby boy last night. Mother and child are doing very well, and we're assigning Abby Vasquez to the school. In Carol's absence, Abby Vasquez was a teacher at the school. She's a teacher on special assignment this year. And that's it for tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you.
There's always a lot happening in the district.
And we have a student report tonight.
Yes, we do. We have Jackie Zupzig here. And Brian, are you part of this report as well? Brian Rouse? Okay.
Hi, I'm Jackie Zupzig. I'm the ASB president down at Santa Barbara High School. The past few months have been pretty stressful, very successful. Just last Saturday, we had our Valentine's Day King of Hearts dance. It's a dance with a formerly fuzzy reputation and a pretty low turnout rate. But this year, we decided to give it a makeover. We started a new theme of a Girls Ask Guys dance. Literally every single day for three weeks, you could see girls outside putting flowers all over guys' cars or standing out there with signs, "Joe, will you go to King of Hearts with me?" My personal favorite was a girl who put a fish in a fishbowl on a desk and had a little sign next to it that said, "Out of all the fish in the sea, will you go to King of Hearts with me?" My personal favorite. Also, we got a new DJ who came to do a promo at lunch. It brought tons of kids during lunch to listen to this guy play music. People were dancing at lunch in our, just right in front of the school. It was really, really cool. We sold about 600 tickets, which is literally double of what we sold last year. Also, this past week was our three-day showing of Music of the Night, which is a student-run, produced, choreographed, performed musical review with songs from popular Broadway shows. So the theater was packed all three nights. It was really successful and really fun. This month also, as you know, is diversity awareness. It's a month for us. I don't know if it's a week for the junior highs, but it's a month for us. And from factual banners that are in our hallways to lots of assemblies that are focusing on diversity, we even have posters with facts and inspirational messages on every classroom door. We're just hoping that that'll make all the students in our school be able to embrace diversity and accept themselves as well as accepting others in all our differences. Also, we recently finished a class competition raising money for children with leukemia called Pennies for Patients. Naturally, the seniors won. And that's about it for me. Questions or anything? Thank you.
All right, so I have a less, maybe less exciting report.
All right, so I have a less, maybe less exciting report. So first of all, well, students and staff, thank you for the new quad with the new grass at Santa Barbara High School to get rid of the ugly portables. And we also, and the staff thanks you for the new staff cafeteria as well. Now, we're also implementing ABI, the Ares Browser Interface, so that parents and students can, well, at this point, parents can access students' grades, attendance, and if it goes to the next level and teachers fully embrace the gradebook, students would even be able to check their homework on a nightly basis, online, right there. So, and you already talked about the 10-10-10 competition, and those films are available online. Well, we'll have Tony's film available online if you want. And Back to School Night for Santa Barbara High School is this next Thursday, February 21st. The staff apparently personally delivered flyers to all the area schools and hoping to increase turnout. And then for sports, we have four teams in CIF competition. We have girls water polo, boys basketball, boys soccer, and a few members from the wrestling team. And, let's see, boys basketball plays this Wednesday, tomorrow, at either 7:00 or 7:30 at home. So, if any of you want to come, you're welcome. All right, thank you.
I have a question for you, Brian.
Sure.
Is that film already online at the Don's website?
I could have it online tonight if you want.
No, I don't want to put you, I don't want to put you under any pressure. When you have it online, will you send an email to Mr. Turnbull? And then he can send it to us?
Sure, no problem.
And we'll let her look.
Yeah.
At your convenience, not to?
Yeah, well, actually, it'd be Tony who uploads the video anyway, so I wouldn't have to do anything, so send him an email. But, yeah, and also, our video bulletins are still being posted online, so you can check those out. TV.SBHSdon's.org. I think I gave you the website before. All right, thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Public comments?
Like, we have two. First are Susan Pico and Kathy Crisman.
First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Susan Pico from Cleveland School. I'm a 4th, 5th grade teacher. And Kathy is, Kathy Crisman is a special ed aide. And I'm going to read this to you, just so that I can get this in, in your time allowed. "We are here to request your support. We would like to offer the Santa Barbara School District a unique opportunity that will benefit the teachers of our community. Many other area schools, districts, such as Ventura and Lampoke have already made the decision to support their teachers and staff outside the classroom by supplying daycare. To take this idea to the next step, we'd like to pass out surveys to the teachers and staff. Affordable, high-quality childcare is still inaccessible to the majority of teachers in our county, but changing that fact is not beyond the realm of possibility. We are here to provide you an opportunity that will help retain teachers and families in our areas. Teachers who otherwise could find cheaper housing and daycare options from districts in nearby cities. We are suggesting an affordable, high-quality facility that will provide daycare only during working months. Currently, teachers must sign a year-long contract that's to guarantee their spot, so even though they don't use it during the summer or Christmas, they pay, otherwise the daycare drops them. We are proposing a centrally-located daycare which will allow teachers and staff to be on time and well-prepared for their students. Though we have low-income preschools for many of our students' families, teachers often find themselves with a 20-to-40-minute round-trip drive each morning to get to sitters, daycares, and preschools, often a combination of them all. As the budget becomes tighter, this could encourage teachers to be flexible at the bargaining table. We feel these vouchers will be a great incentive in hiring and retaining the quality teachers our district needs. Lastly, in homes where both parents receive health benefits, we would like to explore this idea of a proof-of-payment voucher. Teachers who opt not to have the insurance coverage because their spouse already has the family covered could use the money toward daycare. Childcare costs have outpaced what the average family spends on food. According to the National Association of Childcare Resources and Referral Agencies, infant care to 18 months runs as high as $16,800 a year, and care for a four-year-old or up to four-year-old in a licensed care runs $12,060. If you have two children, that's over $30,000 a year. We need to support our teachers and staff and show them they are appreciated. With what we have to offer, coupled with district benefits, we propose quality daycare meeting the needs of teachers. What we are asking of you is to allow us to distribute a survey to teachers and staff to see if this is a need, a true need, in our district. And thank you in advance for your consideration."
I have the survey.
Thank you, and thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you.
And, thank you. Next, we have Monica Spear.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Monica Spear, and I'm the executive director for Girls Incorporated of Greater Santa Barbara, where we're inspiring all girls to be strong, smart, and bold. I'm here this evening to commend you for the work that you do to ensure that the girls in our community receive the full benefit of our education system. I'm also here this evening to, on behalf of Girls, Inc., offer you a gift for our school libraries. In 2001, Letters from the Heart, our first Girls, Inc. inspirational book of messages, was published. This book features words of wisdom from 40 amazing women and girls. Over the years, these letters have proved to be a beacon of light and a source of encouragement and inspiration for young girls to have the courage and strength to follow their dreams. Continuing in the tradition of asking women of substance to speak to young girls, we have published More Letters from the Heart. This new book contains letters from 50 outstanding women in honor of Girls Incorporated of Greater Santa Barbara's 50th anniversary. The theme for More Letters from the Heart was inspired by the successful Tell Me, Girls Incorporated, national campaign. We posed this question to our women contributors. What piece of advice would have been helpful to you growing up, and given what you now know, what would you tell a young girl today? This question was modified for our young girl contributors, inviting them to express in their own words and art the guidance they would like to hear from women. The synchronicity took our breath away. Smart, accomplished, well-rounded women reveal their own personal stories and the challenges they faced and overcame. In addition, powerful words reassure young girls to believe in themselves, reach for the stars, get an education, and never give up. And our girls disclose through their earnest, forthright words and creative, humorous, sometimes poignant art, a deep desire to be heard. Lessons learned, resilience, and discovery fill these pages. We hope that you and the thousands of girls who visit our school libraries will enjoy these unique and empowering exchanges. Thank you. So I have 12 copies of our first book and our new book, Letters from the Heart, More Letters from the Heart, to offer you as a token of our appreciation for your support and in continuing to inspire all girls to be strong, smart, and bold. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll be happy to have them in our libraries.
And we want to see them, so, during our break, so maybe we can, can we bring them over here for, is that okay? We're going to leave them back here. Strong as well.
Madam Chair, I know it's not ordinary protocol to have question and answer during the public comment, but I do have a question for Ms. Spear. First of all, congratulations on the grant that you got from the Women's Fund.
Thank you.
But I read that you're going to be doing some teen programs, and I guess I wanted to learn more about that.
Yes, thank you for asking and for acknowledging the grant. We're very fortunate that we did receive $55,000 from the Women's Fund to support a teen mentoring program. In addition, we held a special fundraising event last November, and the funds from that event are also restricted for teen programs. So it's been one of our longtime strategic goals to increase the age group of the girls that we're serving and really focus on our teenage girls, as we all would acknowledge. I think that's such an important age group to be able to provide programs and services for. So what we have established are three primary teen programs that we're starting to implement. One is a teen mentoring program where it's both one-on-one, women from our community working with teen girls, as well as group mentoring activities. The second, we're working with Goldman Sachs to do a corporate camp where the girls will go through the whole business planning process and actually have an opportunity to go to New York and implement part of their business plan. And then the third is an actual teen program. We're in discussion with City Parks and Rec at this time to be able to offer some of our intentional and compensatory programs to teen girls at the school sites.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. How exciting.
By the way, Barbara was in our first book, so you'll have to look for her.
Barbara Chiani was a featured author.
Ooh, I can't wait. Did you have something else?
No, no, no.
Okay. We're on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'd like to pull D1s.
Okay.
D9.
I'll move to approve with the exception of D1 and D9.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, not hearing any. It's 5-0. All except, we'll come back to D1 and D5 at the end of the meeting.
I think nine.
D9, I'm sorry. So we go on to our action agenda. E1, approval of submission of grant by the city of Santa Barbara for Las Pacitas Creek Restoration and Adams School Yard Habitat.
Well, this is an agenda item that we would normally have put on the consent agenda, but I knew that the board would want to hear more about this, so I've asked Dave to do an oral presentation as well. Dave Hetjunk is our Director of Facilities and Operations.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, board members. The city of Santa Barbara is applying for a grant to take stormwater from an area around Adams Elementary School, retain it on the golf course next to Adams, and treat it there. As you may be aware, the north side and west side of Adams Elementary borders the city golf course. We have stormwater that comes under Las Pacitas Road, along the edge of the property, down to somewhere in here, and then drains out to the golf course. Also, the housing track up on top drains the golf course. So the idea is to take this stormwater and treat it in areas on the golf course rather than having it pass through the golf course. As part of this grant, in this area of Adams Elementary School, there'll be an opportunity to have some features for education and along environmental type as far as water treatment and retaining some water there. It will be accessible for the physically challenged and will be a fantastic learning opportunity for the students at Adams Elementary School. And I was pleased to be a part of a meeting with Adams Elementary, teachers, community members, and the city, and we're all on board on this. And it is really no fiscal impact to the district and an educational benefit to the district.
May I ask a question?
Okay.
Do you know what the timeline is? Obviously, what we were seeing was a, was a draft that's due pretty soon.
The draft is due within a week. This was, this was a document that was probably 10, 12 days old when it went into the board agenda. The city is finalizing that draft, and as part of their submission, they need to include that the Board of Education supports this project because part of it will be on our property.
Right there. Do you know when they would hear if they got the grant?
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, as an Adams parent, I have to say that it's a great opportunity for Adams students. I think it's wonderful for all of our students whenever they have access to environmental education and the idea of a sort of a water, water garden and creek restoration, I think it's going to be terrific. And I'd like to make, I'd like to make that motion then, to approve the submission of the grant by the city of Santa Barbara for Las Pacitas Creek Restoration and Adams School Yard Habitat.
I, oh, well, I just want, I was going to second it, but I wanted to just ask a quick question. What specifically will the students be doing?
They will be testing the water. They will be growing plants for relocation from this area out onto the golf course, where they're going to create some holding ponds to hold this water, let it percolate down into groundwater rather than having it pass through on to Earl Warren Showgrounds and beyond. A majority of the water comes from the residential area on this side of Las Pacitas and to the north of the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion, Parker and Noel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes 5-0. E2, Adoption Resolution 0708-24, Resolution opposing the governor's proposed 20809 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? No?
Well, I, I would, I'd love to change a whole bunch of stuff. I could support it with a bunch of changes, but it would take some time.
Well, we could come back with it, but if we have people who, anybody want to, you made a motion, so.
I'm willing to withdraw it and to bring it back to another agenda with the, what we have in front of us, and then a copy of the resolution with the proposed changes.
Okay. Was that a?
So an option A and an option B?
Dr. O, you'll come back in two weeks with that?
Some of my questions are just, I want to make sure I got, that the numbers are right. And the thousands of, the tens of thousands of teachers, when I'd like to make sure that's, that number's right. And then a couple of them, I think, are just, need some wording changes. For my support.
Okay, well, if you don't mind, two weeks, you'll come back with that?
Oh, I'd be delighted.
Okay.
Could I ask that you give us alternative wording so that we can put it on the agenda in advance?
Yep.
Okay.
Move to approve the request for a supplemental hearing on student expulsion case number 0708-29. It was Parker and, I'm sorry, Harder. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, that passes 5-0. I think I voted. Okay. E4 is the expulsion cases.
In the case of 0708-32, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel through June of 2008.
Second.
Harder and Cordero, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0.
The second one, we dealt with already, okay, on our list. I'm going to jump to 0708-18 and move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
And also change to through June.
Change to June 2008.
That's fine, yeah.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Noel.
Oh.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Nope, passes.
Okay.
5-0. Now we're on to the 0838.
Right. I will move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel through June, through June 2008, and include connecting the student to an adult mentor. Second.
Harder and Parker, go ahead.
Can I request an amendment that the student can petition for early readmittance based on appropriate behavior and completion of the rehabilitation plan?
I'm not adverse to it. It would be a mid-semester activity. I guess that would be my reluctance. The timing may not be beneficial to the student.
Okay, I understand what you mean.
Yeah.
I'll withdraw that amendment.
Okay, well, we have a vote, we have a motion, Harder and Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0, passes 5-0. I think there's more reluctance there than the vote signifies, but there we go. We're on to the conference agenda. F1 is the Framework for Expenditure Reductions in the Current and Subsequent Two Fiscal Years.
We've heard a number of budget reports. We've been taking a look at our own budget. We saw a 45- We saw a 45-day response to the state budget. Shirley provided us with reliable numbers for that report. Provided us with reliable numbers for an interim report, but as we heard in the, in December, but as we heard in the report from School Services and from reports from Eric Smith on the governor's proposed budget, we're looking at, at rather dire circumstances here if that goes through as proposed. In fact, what was currently, what was previously projected as a half a million dollar surplus beyond the 3% for next year's budget would become some $4 million in required budget cuts for next year's budget. We do have some new information on the, on the likelihood of mid-year cuts. It doesn't sound very likely at this point, but the other proposed cuts would absolutely devastate our budget. And since the clock is ticking on this year's budget and every dollar saved in this year's budget is a dollar that can go toward next year's budget, and knowing that we would have to make decisions about next year's budget well in advance, in fact, even in advance of the governor's May revise and in advance of the final adoption on the part of the state, we thought we had better move quickly. And as promised, we're bringing a report to you on the plan for working with expenditure reductions so that we can meet our, our two-year fiscal requirements. And to provide that report is Eric Smith, who is our interim Assistant Superintendent for Business Services.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. I, I think the first place I'd like to start is with the School Services of California study, and as you recall, they were hired to do in part an independent multi-year forecast. And in that forecast, using the assumptions from the governor's budget, you can see that in the first subsequent year, absent any kind of intervention, and what I mean by that in terms of expenditure reductions, we burn through the reserve and have a negative fund balance of $320,000. So when you take those two figures together, the 320,000 negative and the 3.7 reserve, you're at about $4 million just to keep your head above water. The thing that's critical about that is that in the second subsequent year, you could subtract $4 million out of that and you can still see you're going to be $2 million short in the second subsequent year if all the assumptions held. And those assumptions include that the state's budget actually has the kind of revenue reductions that are proposed by the governor that are declined, especially in the secondary district, is as significant as we project and that we have no other surprises, either to the good or to the bad. So in our last discussion, there was some conversations relative to what are we doing right now? I think most of the board and the community and staff know that we've instituted a spending freeze. We're basically, have a Q and A on the web fairly soon in terms of what that means. You know, our primary focus is on the unrestricted side of the budget because that's where we need to restore the reserve. And if we don't spend our categoricals, we lose the indirect costs that we generate from that. So that'll be there. We're also working on continuous communication with the stakeholders in this process, and part of that, as Brian alluded to, is keeping you up to date relative to what's happening in Sacramento. We're hearing that the mid-year cuts might not be as significant to us as we originally thought, but we never thought that was going to be a huge issue for us. We thought we'd be able to weather that storm. It's the 0809 and beyond that are really the big hitters. So what I'm doing here is just kind of providing a framework in terms of dealing with a lot of the low-hanging fruit and showing you that we've done our due diligence in a number of items when I walk through these slides. And we'll be bringing back targeted reductions later, but I want you to know that this is really drawn from my own personal experiences in other districts. So you're going to see concepts that you might not have seen before. This is not specific to this district. It's generic. Some of the concepts will apply, some will not, but I think you need to know that we're covering this ground and doing our due diligence. So the title of this slide presentation is From Negative to Positive, and that's basically because I think it's second interim, based on the multi-year projections, we'll be in a negative status. You all know who I am. So the first steps, as I alluded to, is getting your board on board in terms of knowing what the message is, what the problem is, and what we need to do. Communicate accurately and continuously with stakeholders. We talked about the importance of that. Establish a strong dialogue with the COE. I was on the phone today with county office staff about specific issues relative to our district, and we're going to have a meeting with county office tomorrow as well. Identify the causes. These are not all causes that relate to this district, but some do apply. Declining enrollment, collective bargaining agreements, position control is not integrated with budget development, lack of multi-year forecasting, inadequate systems, which usually breed poorly trained staff, which usually breeds poor data integrity. I'm not saying we have any or all of these. These are just symptomatic of districts that have these kind of issues. Identifying the magnitude of the problem. We need to identify the total deficit, including the reserve requirement, because remember, the restoration of the reserve is a one-time issue. Basically eliminating the ongoing structural deficit, the imbalance between expenditures and revenues is an ongoing issue. So even if you burn down your reserve and you manage to basically stop deficit spending, you're still in the position of having to restore your reserve. In this type of situation, there's really no quick fixes. It's a lot of heavy lifting. Fiscal recovery, when you have a significant deficit spending pattern, usually will take a couple of years because the reason is, if you wanted to eliminate this problem tomorrow, you'd have to make $6.6 million worth of cuts now. Most districts don't have the wherewithal when they're in this type of situation to do all that. You've got to look at what's happened previously, look at the past. As you know, we've retained School Services of California to do kind of a forensic analysis, and I think we have a much better understanding of some of the events that led to, you know, happen, what happened last summer. And then you need to look at what it takes. Need strong leadership, credible numbers, which is fiscal transparency and political will. I'm going to talk a little bit about cash, because I talked about the multi-year issue, and the reason that cash is important is if this problem is not only going to be fixed but eliminated, and it's going to be done over a couple of years. Remember, we had the discussion about the modified accrual basis of accounting, and we use fund accounting, which means that we recognize liabilities when they're known, not when we actually expense against cash. The flip side is we recognize money when we know it's going to be received, not when it actually hits the county treasury. So you can be positive or negative on a fund balance basis, but your cash position can be different than what your fund balance position is. So on a multi-year recovery, and so a lot of times it's called a fiscal recovery plan, you're basically making the expenditure reductions over time to bring your expenditures in line, alignment with your revenues, but you have to have cash to pay the bills. A lot of times, you'll borrow that cash from other funds, pay it back within the 120 days, or you'll borrow it from the county treasury, or if the county office is plus with cash, they can lend you cash. They told me they want to do that today. So we know cash pays bills, that's the obvious. Cash helps us meet payroll, but cash buys you time. That's what's critical. So if you don't have a lot of resources with cash, I mean other funds, the problem becomes more acute, and so we need to deal with those issues and look at our cash position. And when I mean cash, I mean cash across all funds, not just in the general fund, because we have to borrow from other funds until we can reduce our expenditures and bring them in alignment with our revenue. So cash is king. We identify our cash position, we identify cash resources. Inter-fund borrowing, if we can do it. County treasurer, who has to loan you cash, but has restrictions and significant criteria that must be met on when it's paid back. County Office of Education, which basically is at their discretion if they want to loan you cash and if they have the reserves to do it. And then, as you know, we use short-term cash borrowing called trans, which the county office did tell me that they approved our trans today, but it'll be a conditional approval with conditions on it. Okay, so where do we start? When we start looking at things that could materially affect our fund balance, we start with last year's close. We review our accounts receivable, accounts receivable to make sure there are no surprises, meaning that we set up receivables that didn't come in or came in significantly less. We look at our payables and see if there's any payables that were set up that maybe we really didn't need to set them up. And so basically, if we can reverse them or reduce them, that increases fund balance. So we start with last year's close, so look at that, and we've been doing that. We attack the structural deficit. We live the structural deficit. We look at that balance, the ongoing imbalance between revenues and expenditures, know what it is, know what the target is, and we know that we have a target of $4 million, which is zooming in on the structural deficit, not totally eliminating it, but making big steps toward that elimination on a multi-year basis. Using multi-year forecasting software to simulate alternative scenarios. I think everybody's heard this, you know, a dollar saved this year is $2 next year. When you see that on a multi-year forecast, and I hope to be able to do that on an interactive basis with software at second interim, you'll see what I'm talking about, because then you can change the assumptions and say, you know, what happens if we don't take as big of a deficit, or what happens if the decline isn't as significant? And you can see how it rolls through the forecast, or what if decline is worse, or whatever the case may be. Document all assumptions. That means we have these binders, whom all the assumptions relative to enrollment projections, our enrollment projections that converted to ADA, the revenue assumptions we use, our step and column increases, all that has to be laid out, documented, so it's fiscally Speaking of that, we rely on industry standards to do that. Enrollment projections, we use the industry standard cohort survival. We look at trending out what our P2 ADA is going to be based on a C-beds to P2 analysis, although we know we're in declining enrollment, so we'll always use the prior year numbers because that's the safest, most conservative bet. For revenue estimates, we use the School Services of California DART board. And expenditure estimates, not only do we rely on the industry standards, we've got to rely on our own intuition and test of reasonableness. When you look at something, is it reasonable? And a lot of times, you'll see things and you deal with numbers all day, and unless you develop that test of reasonableness, things will pop out soon as you, soon as you start, you know, honing that skill. Expenditure estimates, validate step and column costs, verify that health and welfare caps are being enforced, test of reasonableness. Attack the structural deficit, two-pronged approach. We reduce that imbalance, we restore the reserve. Any dollar saved this year counts as $2 next year. Institute spending freeze, we've done that. Evaluate replacement of positions on a case-by-case basis. We're doing that now on the basis of whether a position is mission critical. Then we look at what I like to call budget craftsmanship, and what that really talks about are shifts internally within the budget that can free up unrestricted dollars. And this is just a battery of ideas. Some are applicable to this district, some are not, but it gives you an idea of the kind of process we use. You need to make sure that indirect costs are charged against all restricted programs. Nobody gets a free ride. If there's a restricted program, it should be self-contained, and part of that self-containment means they pay the indirect cost at the approved indirect cost rate. We reduce or eliminate encroachments where feasible. We have encroachments beyond special ed and transportation. Those will probably be some consideration and discussion of what those programs are in the next couple of months. Utilize categorical flexibility, the mega item, AB825 federal flex. Whenever we can do that, when it can free up unrestricted revenues, if we have carryovers that are not designated and we can utilize those flex transfers to free up unrestricted, we should be looking at that. Some districts have general obligation bond language that allows for that to be a contribution to deferred maintenance fund. We don't have that luxury, but I'll give you an idea of how that would be employed. Our deferred maintenance contribution's around $560,000. If we did have that, that frees up $560,000 of unrestricted funds you don't have to put over there. Same thing with redevelopment. We're doing some due diligence on what redevelopment agencies, including both Santa Barbara and Galleta, might owe us. If that does end up generating money, that can be used to basically replace that deferred maintenance contribution, because the two primary uses of redevelopment entitlement are capital facilities and/or deferred maintenance. Is the capital facilities fund being charged at 3% for administrative costs? We looked at it, we weren't. Now we're doing it. We're doing it this year, we'll do it next year. Looking at charging the proportional share of pay-as-you-go costs for post-retirement benefits. And what I mean by that is right now, if we pay the cost for any formerly district employee post-retirement benefit, health and welfare benefit from, let's say, 55 to 65, the unrestricted general fund is shouldering 100% of that burden. That shouldn't be happening. There should be a proportional share from the categoricals, just like you would impose a payroll tax for workers' comp. We're looking at how to recapture not only the last four months on an annualized rate this year, but moving that forward into next year so the categoricals pay their fair share. And we'll have these quantified on our list, and some of them are significant. Identify portion of special ed excess cost billbacks. I never saw this until I came to this district, so I thought I'd add it to the list, where we basically segregate the facilities charges for special ed excess costs away from the program when we pay for it with facilities dollars. I like that, so I put it in the list. Ensure that deferred maintenance matches, counting as a 0.5% of the routine restricted maintenance contribution. We are doing that. Very good. A lot of districts don't know that the Office of Public School Construction, who has purview over the sale of surplus property, has allowed the sale of surplus property to basically backfill the routine restricted maintenance account on a one-year contribution, which basically frees up unrestricted dollars on a one-time basis. It's not, it's not a panacea, but it, when you need to restore a reserve or something like that, where you have a one-time need, it can be done. Looking at whether there's any debt service, lease payments, they're made out of the general fund. We don't have any, but if we did, we'd look at not only trying to move them over to a restricted fund if they were capital facilities related, or if they weren't, then basically refunding them at a lower interest rate. We want to make sure that we identified both one-time revenues and one-time expenditures and make sure that they're not rolled into the multi-year projection because they'll distort in the out years. I'm not sure we did that, a good job of that at the first interim. We'll be more precise at the second interim, and we'll make sure that we flag those and pull those out. Looking at, we're paying unused site fees. There are ways to flatten that out if you've issued a COPs. We haven't done that, but this is a trick that a lot of districts don't know. There's an ed code provision that allows you basically to get out of that if you've issued non-voter-approved debt for capital facilities. Whoops, I think I went. We know personnel cost constitutes 85 to 95% of the budget. We need to look over time, have staffing across the board, classified, certificated, administrative, reduced with the rate of declining enrollment. Scrutinize high school master schedules. A lot of times, we're carrying, you know, master schedules with courses with just a few students in. It's worth a look, there's savings there. Review the demographics of your workforce. Is a retirement incentive feasible? There's a word of warning here. Be sure not to double count both your savings when you do the actual incentive program with what you have in your budget development. A lot of districts have got caught up in that and double counted the savings. More personnel costs. Do we have any fanons on the benefit roll? So I know that personnel is working to tighten that up. I'm feeling pretty good that we don't have that situation, although I have been in a district where I did a full-blown mandatory re-enrollment of every single person in the district. And that meant them bringing in marriage certificates, adoption certificates, you name it, across the board. Review agreements with brokers. And we've been looking at not so much the health and welfare, but we have other brokers in some of our other insurance areas that, in my mind, we really didn't need and have just been kind of institutionalized over time, and nobody's really looked at it. Review all insurance arrangements for cost effectiveness. Look at workers' comp, property. Look at workers' comp, property and liability. Look at whether it's, makes more sense on a cost-effective basis to independently self-insure. I don't think it does in our particular situation, although we probably will be bringing a proposal to the board to move out of Southern California relief for property and liability to SIS 2. And I think that's going to save us about $77,000 minimum going into next year. Is the district due any rebates? Yeah, we did receive a rebate of about $51,000 the other day, so that was nice. One-time money, but still nice. And then, this whole issue is an issue or an effort of continuous improvement. I mean, one of the things that, when you get to this level of having to dig deep and try to dig out of this type of situation, it kind of heightens your expectations, I've, of your staff and everybody around you. I mean, you're going to dig in, you're going to go through kind of a metamorphosis here, basically looking at all our systems, basically having higher expectations of our staff. And that includes everybody. I mean, from the administration all the way down to every single person that works through this process. So, I just threw that in there because that's my own personal experience, and unless you kind of team together, you're not going to get through it. So, those are kind of the tenets that I thought I really needed to kind of espouse throughout this thing. So, as I mentioned before, we'll be bringing back specific targeted reductions. This is kind of an overall framework that shows you some of the things we're thinking about. Some of them are, like I said, low-hanging fruit. Others are going to require a lot of examination, and we'll be bringing a targeted list. I don't know, I don't know if we have a timeframe on that, Dr. Sarvis. Have you thought about that?
Yes, I do, but we'll talk about them more tomorrow in Cabinet.
Okay, great. So, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions about anything I presented.
Thank you for the words. Well, I had just one immediate question. As you were talking about identifying the cause, and you said some of them apply to our district and some of them don't apply to our district. And I was wondering, from your perspective, which ones would you say apply?
I could walk you through that right now. In the causes?
Yes.
Well, obviously, we know we're dealing with declining enrollment. We know that basically, when the collective bargaining agreements were entered into, they were based on assumptions that are radically different. So, I'm not saying there's any fault there, but if we knew there was a 2.4% revenue decrease from '07, '08, '08, '09, your probably collective bargaining agreement would look a little bit different.
Rather than a 3% salary increase.
Exactly. We know that position control is not integrated with budget development. That was School Services' recommendation. It's a high recommendation of mine because basically that allows you to drive your budget development process with more accurate projections of salary and benefits. We're using more multi-year forecasting, but as I said, we probably need to do more And we have some data integrity issues. So, we have several of these issues, but not all of them.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Under identify magnitude, you have identified magnitude. The problem, identify total deficit including reserve requirement. Shouldn't there be a cushion on top of the reserve requirement? Especially, well, we've, I know we've talked about that in the past. We've heard recommendations from a former CBO that we should be writing at 5%. We heard as much as 10% from, from one, who said that was like a statewide average, which didn't quite seem real to me. But anyway, we've heard big numbers about approaching basic aid, that you need to have a big cushion, so.
I, I think there's a couple of things. The 10% average, which you've probably heard in the last couple of years, probably doesn't exist at this point in time, or won't exist by the end of this fiscal year. You know, there were a lot of districts that banked money, but when you look at that, that calculation is really looked at just ending balances. And what it neglects to show is whether boards locally reserved or specifically designated portions of their ending balance for specific initiatives. So, you could have 10%, but you might have 2% of that reserved in a local designation for XYZ, but when you do this kind of macro calculation, it shows as part of the ending balance. And so, I, I think that was really misconstrued. A lot of boards will aspire for a 5% reserve, but generally not in this type of climate. I mean, with respect to basic aid, it's probably more important that you have a large reserve if you anticipate sliding out of basic aid. And a lot of times, you'll hear districts that are basic aid that are on the cusp talk about a soft landing fund, you know, if they slide out of basic aid back into revenue limit. There's no doubt about the transition from revenue limit to basic aid will be difficult because of the factors that are in play. But I think it'd be very difficult, given the current set of assumptions and circumstances, to try and accumulate a 5% to 6% to 7% reserve, no matter how fiscally prudent I might think it is.
Can I go through some other, a couple more pages? What it takes. Strong, strong leadership, credible numbers, fiscal transparency, and political will. And you didn't talk a lot about political will.
We're going to talk probably more about political will in a couple of weeks because I'm going to bring back the presentation on the county office's fiscal oversight responsibility and, or authority, and basically the consequences for not having political will. But basically, what I meant is, you know, this is a difficult time. There's no doubt about it, and it's going to require courage on everybody's part.
You don't have anything in here that I, something that I, I see missing. And that is, you know, we, certainly, we need strong and credible leadership. We need credible numbers, and we need transparency. I think we need, something that goes with transparency, to me, is also to be forthcoming. Not just, not niggardly with information, but getting it out there voluntarily, proacting. But the thing that's missing, to me, is some kind of institutionalized oversight. And I just think that's terribly important. I think that, that if we rely wholly on, on people, we are vulnerable, and that we need checks. And I've, I've mentioned the audit committee idea before, or some functional equivalent to an audit committee, that it changes the expectation of structure and, I think, has salutary effects throughout the system.
Yeah, I, I think the discussion of the audit committee probably is better suited to the discussion we're going to have in a couple of weeks because we're going to talk about these checks and balances, and basically, what I would call, in that particular case, they're more externally imposed. You're looking at more of an internally imposed kind of audit function. But, I mean, I, I think the discussion is appropriate relative to the whole conversation with regard to fiscal oversight.
So, we're going to have a discussion of checks and balances?
That's what it's going to be. Basically, it's going to be a primer on the county office's responsibility under AB 1200 and AB 2756, and basically, not only their responsibilities, but their authority.
Okay, well, that's great. I look forward to that discussion. I'm a great believer in checks and balances. Hold on, I have a couple more in here. Oh, institute spending freeze. When?
February 4th.
So, so all, so all this money we just approved in the consent budget?
Well, remember that-
Was that before or after the freeze?
One of the issues with the freeze is it's impossible to freeze everything where it is. So, basically, what you do is if racks have been initiated prior to February 4th, you let them go through. And there are exceptions. Obviously, we can't freeze when there's issues of health and safety, and we're not going to cut out, you know, school and supplies and other necessary operational supplies, but we're basically, have frozen everything else. And we're basically leaving a number of positions vacant if they're in the unrestricted general fund, and then we're basically revisiting the ones that we think are mission-critical on a case-by-case basis at Cabinet.
Okay, thank you very much, and I, I really think this, we needed this. This is terrific.
And then, we will have, I'm not sure when it'll be up there, but there'll be kind of an explanation of the freeze, what the specifics, exceptions are, how the process works, and we should have that on the web fairly soon.
But I mean, we, we should take very literally. You say, a, a dollar saved this year is two dollars next year.
Right, because the issue you have-
So, even if there are no mid-year cuts imposed on us?
It'll help you, because the issue you have is twofold. Remember, you've got an ongoing deficit spending pattern, but you're also burning down your reserve, which is a one-time reserve. So, you've got to eventually restore that reserve, and then hopefully obliterate the deficit spending pattern over time. I don't think it can be done in one year. That's when we pushed John Gray the other day, you know, how much do you think? And when you look at those numbers, four millions, probably, you know, it's a hefty number, but it's, yeah, that's what's appropriate.
I, I just, I'm sorry, I just have, one thing I forgot, because I, I don't see it here, but I, oh, here it is. I put under political will. I put zero-based budgeting. Okay? Could you talk about that a little bit?
You know, zero-based budgeting, do you want the history of zero-based budgeting?
No, just a, a capsule definition and why it's so popular.
Well, I mean, zero-based budgeting, and you can't truly zero-base in school districts because you have so many things that you cannot reduce back to zero and justify from the ground up, which is the essence of zero-based budgeting. And-
Can you have modified zero-based budgeting?
Yeah, I mean, what you're, what you're striving for is to move away from incrementalism, which is basically rolling budgets over on a status quo basis. But remember, what makes it difficult to employ zero-based budgeting is, one, you have obligations to your employee associations that are already driven, okay? Things that we like to call maintenance of effort costs, which are step and column if you have any increases, not only increases to your statutory benefits, but remember, they're also proportional to your salaries. So, if you hire more teachers because you have contractual obligations under your collective bargaining agreement, then you're also paying the proportional costs of unemployment, workers' comp, STIRS. So, that's a maintenance of effort cost. It's unavoidable, it's the cost of doing business. So, those things, you cannot strip back to zero, okay? You can't reduce back to zero like you can in a true zero-based budget. You can do that to some extent in the discretionary objects, which I often refer to as the fours, fives, and sixes, but you really can't do that with your utilities, can you? I mean, I guess you could shut off all the power and, you know, I don't know, you know, then, then you have to assume that there's some kind of competition and free enterprise, and I'm not sure, you know, when you're dealing with the utilities, there's a lot of other competitors, you know, so. But any event, those are some of the obstacles you deal with. The other issues are, it's difficult to do zero-based budgeting because one of the key revenue variables you're dealing with is ADA, which is unpredictable. I mean, we do our best to project, but we really don't know until P2, which is the seventh month of the year. And that's when we do period two, or, yeah, period two apportionment attendance, and that's where the majority of our revenue limit dollars are funded off. So, you've got all these different things that make it difficult. Can you find some balance in between? Yeah, I think you can, but to go to wholesale zero-based budgeting is really not feasible.
The, the part, when I looked, when I looked up zero-based budgeting, the part that stuck in my mind was that you had to justify the full budget, not just the increment. And, and I could, and I, as I look over the array of things, and certainly not the 80% or so that's in salaries, I recognize that.
Right, you're talking about the discretionary and-
I'm talking about the discretionary funds, and, and I just look, I say, at least in the, in the decade that I've been looking at these things, we, there's never been a thoroughgoing review and re-justification of programs. And it seemed to me that, that, so I, so I like that idea, if that's what zero-based budgeting meant.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it-
And I liked it especially because I think it, the exercise itself would lend a credibility to our process that, that is sorely lacking at the, at the moment.
Yeah, zero-based budgeting really uses like decision packages, you know, in this discretionary, in our, on this particular application in the fours, fives, and sixes, and then you would justify from the ground up each one of those. Now, it differs a little bit from program budgeting in the sense that program budgeting ties it to whatever the specific outcome. And in our particular case, there would be hopefully some kind of educational outcome or, but there can be a hybrid of those two. It's just, the question is, how much labor is going to be involved in doing all of that? And our system, our financial systems and SACS isn't really set up to do, it's not set up to do it easily, let me put it that way.
And it is a small part of our budget. It's not-
It's a small part. I mean, frankly, I mean, the difficulty, the difficulty is that, you know, 85, 90% of your budget is personnel, and when you're talking about multimillion dollars worth of cuts, it's unavoidable that you're going to touch personnel sooner or later. I mean, our goal is to try and touch everything else before we go there.
Now, as you go into the, the personnel cuts, then, I mean, what are the criteria that guide that? Is there a justify, is there something like a zero-based justification of the programs? Do you really need all these people in this sort?
Well, I think one of the things that-
Programs? Are there programs that can get, get by with fewer people?
Well, I think one of the things that I alluded to, and we've heard elsewhere, is that, you know, when you've experienced enrollment decline over a long period of time, and you haven't declined, not only, you know, your teaching staff might have declined, but not everybody else has declined, or your administrative staff has declined more than other portions, you know, you, there's got to be, the reduction should be proportional and commensurate with your rate of decline over time. I mean, one of the issues that's difficult to get a handle on with declining enrollment is, is that we know that, you know, when there's less students in 25 or 20, you know, student packages, there's one less teacher, whatever, and we go through the process, but a lot of times, we don't look at everything else. So, we have to look at everything kind of at a macro level, a more global level, and, you know, I mean, unfortunately, that means looking across the district and making sure that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm searching for words that are not politically incorrect. And I'm having a hard time, so. But, yeah, looking at things on a proportional basis and making sure that, you know, is, as fair and equitable as possible.
Thank you very much.
That was a nice recovery, wasn't it?
Sounded very pensive. Go ahead.
Maybe Mrs. Corpus can speak to this question, because I thought that we had done some zero-based, like a modified zero-based budgeting process through last spring, where some of the accounts were being reviewed.
The process that we went through was not for you. Is there a base budgeting process? When we did the adopted, adapted budget for '07, '08, it was actually a rollover whatever was in the original, I mean, the actuals for the prior year. And then, when we did the first interim, we looked at every single employee that was in the payroll system and make sure that we have enough budget for the year for each of those employees.
Okay. And, you have, you further?
I, I just have one, one other thing that kind of struck me when you're talk, when you're talking about that. And remember, I mean, regardless of whatever predisposition I might have regarding a program, if it's funded out of restricted dollars, from my perspective, I don't care. You know, I care about unrestricted dollars because that's how we're going to get out of this mess. So, you might be, have a restricted program that you think's a waste of money, and it might be a good exercise to look at it and decide whether it's justified or not, but I'm just giving you my perspective as, you know, in experience as a chief financial officer, so.
My other quick question is, on the trans, what are the conditions that the county's putting on it?
I haven't seen the letter yet.
I, I think it would be very helpful if you could explain this, really, just for the camera and for the audience, a little more of what you just said, that sounds very cavalier.
It's not cavalier, it's, it, it's true. It means, you've probably heard me say this more than once, there's a premium on unrestricted dollars, and basically, your problem is on the unrestricted side of the ledger. problem is on the unrestricted side of the ledger. So, what I mean is that you can look at the restricted side, and you probably should look at the restricted side, but given the circumstances and the cards we're dealt right now, the urgency is on the unrestricted side. That's what I meant by that.
Although, there is the twelve million that's coming over.
Yeah, the contributions that, yeah, yeah, and I meant to include that. I meant to include that in my statement. Obviously, if a restricted program is not paying for itself, and it requires an unrestricted contribution, we should be looking at that, because any dollar that we can reduce in terms of the contribution is a freed-up unrestricted dollar.
Okay, we have a public comment.
Yes, Lane Wheeler.
Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith for a thorough examination. Not necessarily a pleasant examination of where we are, but certainly thorough. Um, I would ask the board to keep in mind, um, a contingency plan to, um, backfill programs or personnel that may be eliminated at one level. We approached that last, this, yeah, last year, when three hundred and forty thousand dollars went back to pay for electives at the junior highs. And, uh, it's real easy to take things out, it's very difficult to put things back. I'd just like to keep our, our collective minds on, on the idea of what programs are essential out there, and if they have to be elec, uh, eliminated, how they might be put back. And then I'd also like us to think outside of the financial box that we, we have right now, uh, you know, looking at, um, what might happen if the, uh, economic landscape of the state changes, if the governor were to raise taxes, which might be a solution. Uh, looking at our excess property as collateral for reserve, the reserve accounts, um, you know, those properties that we have in Hidden Valley and the Tatum property. Um, there's also talk at the state level of loosening the three percent restriction, or, um, the three percent reserve that we are now in. So, you know, while we need to maintain a three percent reserve, if it's loosened by the state, we should certainly consider that as an option that we might have. Um, you know, not funding the obligations, uh, from Gatsby forty-five. There's no requirement to do that, and there's a constant conversation on our board about possibly starting to stash money over there, and I would really caution us to think about that, because there's no legal obligation to do that. Um, also to look at possible funding, local funding, uh, solutions, you know, whether it be a, a parcel tax, or the, uh, possibility of becoming basic aid, or a big sale. Um, all those are, you know, possible income sources that might help us, and so, I guess what I'm saying is, thank you for the presentation, but let's also be thinking outside of the box that we have, uh, around us right now. Thanks.
No, I just want to react to that. I want to thank Mr. Wheeler, I want to thank Mr. Smith. I mean, I think people are trying to do their very best thinking, because we're faced with an enormous problem. Um, and some of the suggestions were great. I just want to respond to the surplus properties. It's really frustrating as a board member to see these enormous properties that aren't generating any income. The flip side is, I would, I, I would not encumber those properties to pay for ongoing expenses. So I just wanted to throw that, that out there.
May I also make a comment about timing? Uh, I think I alluded to this when we started, but as we go through this process, and we, as we project cuts that we will, uh, perhaps need to make, we have to do those in a certain sequence that doesn't jibe at all with the may revise and the final state, uh, adoption of the budget. In fact, one of the deadlines coming up will be the statutory requirement to send out layoff notices. Well, if we don't know whether the money will be there, we need to send out layoff notices. And that will mean, once again, we've done this before, uh, that we'll be sending out layoff notices to people, and in some cases, we will be needlessly worrying them, but we won't know until much later in the game whether the money is there or not.
I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, because I think it, it causes a tremendous amount of anxiety, you know, as, as it should. And I'm wondering if, as we, you know, walk down this path to, to creating a better process than, you know, what we engaged in last year, whether or not we can try and create a situation where the board is in a position to respond once we, the state adopts a budget, and we see what the real and true impacts are in terms of trying to, uh, move quickly to restore positions, so that we're not, you know, leaving so many employees hanging.
Any last thoughts? Anyone else?
Okay, well, move on. Thank you. Uh, we're up to, um, F2, Public Hearing on the Santa Barbara Elementary and High School District's Updated Revised Five-Year Deferred Maintenance Plans.
And Dave Hat Young will describe this. This is a public hearing and a report.
We are now opening a public hearing.
Yes, we are now opening a public hearing.
Dr. Sarvis, members of the board, usually this item is brought to you in June of every year, where we update what we've done that year before we submit to the state before July first. So basically, every year, we update our five-year program with current information. Uh, we've seen the, the scope of some of our deferred maintenance projects increase to where they require formal bidding. And those projects which require formal bidding have been handled by the planning department. And planning department personnel salaries have not been paid from deferred maintenance. So basically, the purpose of bringing this to the board now is because we want to notify the state that we intend to pay a portion of our planning department salaries, salaries from deferred maintenance, because they are administering deferred maintenance projects. I will again bring this back in June, as I do every year, but this is an extra time to you to notify the state, and the state will let us know, uh, if they do not approve of that. We see no reason why they wouldn't approve of that. The only condition is that you can't take a general-funded person and substitute their salary with deferred maintenance, and we are not doing that.
Do you know how, about how much savings we're talking about here?
Well, basically, right now, uh, our planning department is funded with bond funds. And as you're aware, our bond funds are winding down, and these people are now doing larger deferred maintenance and developer fee projects. So the proposal is to fund the, the people that are associated with those projects, and wean them away from the bond funds, and have more of their salaries proportionate to the jobs they're doing, which is developer fee and deferred maintenance projects. The deferred maintenance does require that, uh, I believe you'll see on the submission there, there's a, uh, on number nine, on remarks, on both the elementary and secondary, uh, submission, uh, this would be page two of three on each of the documents. At the bottom of the page is where I throw in the verbiage telling them that projects over fifteen thousand that require a formal bid process are being funded. And I use the term temporary employees, because these employees are funded currently from bond funds. They're not general fund employees, they're not a permanent position so to say, inasmuch as when the money that funds them to do the project is not there, they would be notified that their positions are no longer funded, because the funds are not there to accomplish the, the projects. So, I don't mean to scare these people by using the word temporary employees, but it's the verbiage that is prudent for the documentation.
Any questions?
I'm a little confused, I think, if you could clarify. I don't know, uh, under fiscal impact, uh, annual, annual of the district's branch to state allocation, and it's a, and it's the years that you're confused about, uh, some of the requests for two thousand six, seven. Is there a lag there? Are there, is, is that payment then paid out of the two thousand seven, eight budget?
There, there is a lag. Typically, our deferred maintenance allocations are given to us in January, not July first.
So, so, uh, how does that, how does that impact, uh, uh, my, my first question then was, well, do we show that as a, as a liability, uh, at the end of the year?
I would have to refer to, uh, Ms. Corpus and Mr. Smith for that answer.
We estimate what the contribution, or what our inter-fund contribution will be based on information we get from School Services of California. And then, at the time the state budget's adopted, we know whether the governor has funded it a hundred percent, ninety-five percent, ninety percent, whatever the case may be. And then, we set up an estimate, and then, once we get the apportionment letters mid-year, then we adjust them.
Thank you, thank you.
I just noticed with this, that, um, this, the letter from the state is from December, and the, uh, the state is recommending that you get ninety-one point oh-nine percent of your apportionment. I know it's not ever a hundred percent. Is ninety-one percent about what's been running lately, or is that something different?
This is the lowest it's been for a while.
Yeah, but also remember that when districts are funded, the state takes what are called extreme or critical hardship applications off the top. And what I mean by that is there's a program that's embedded within the deferred maintenance program that says if you've got a single project, and now it's capitated at a million dollars, let's say it's roofing or electrical or whatever, you can apply, and you can apply for that project as an extreme hardship application. And, I'll have to, I shouldn't have went down this road, so now I have to explain it. So, if you're a small district, and let's say your deferred maintenance apportionment is ten thousand dollars, and you match it with ten thousand dollars, and you have an opportunity to access a million dollars for a roofing project, the way it works, it's a million less than twenty thousand, so you get nine hundred and eighty thousand. If you're a district like us, that your contribution is on both sides, what is it? I don't know, we're just looking at one point two million, you know, six hundred thousand from deferred maintenance, and six hundred thousand from the general fund or whatever?
It's, uh, approximately, uh-
Both sides.
Yeah, bo, both sides, yeah.
So, it doesn't make any sense for us to do that. Several years ago, the program wasn't capitated at a million dollars, but now it is. So what I'm saying is that, when the state on a macro level apportions deferred maintenance, they subtract out all the approved critical hardships first, so your funding level might come in at ninety-two or ninety-three percent on a statewide basis. The general rule of thumb is there's going to be ten percent off the top when it's fully funded to fund extreme hardship applications.
And because we accept money from Williams Settlement, uh, we have to pay our hundred percent, even though they only give us ninety-one, so it's not quite fifty-fifty. We pay the bigger half.
Did we get enough from the Williams Settlement to make it work?
Well, we're hoping to get in excess of a million dollars for the heating replacement at Franklin, uh, Elementary School for the old buildings, and hopefully that will be on the State Allocation Board, uh, next month. So, hopefully, I can say, thirty days from now, yes.
Great.
And the board is not required to take any action on this. We're just required to have a public hearing and discuss it.
Okay, and we have no public comment, is that correct? Then I close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, we have a report on the status of special ed.
Well, we're expecting to have our Director of Special Education Services, Joanne Pulley, deliver this report. Uh, she has gone home ill, and we do have some, but not all of the information, and, uh, Robin Swawski's been boning up on it, so she has a memo in front of you, uh, that we produced today, as if it was from Joanne.
Right.
Actually, I worked with the Special Education Office to produce this information. And it's marked, uh, F3.
F3 on the right-hand corner.
Did you find it, Bob?
Yeah, I tucked it in my-
Oh, okay, there you go.
Or I wouldn't lose it.
So, Robin Swawski will deliver this information.
Okay, and as Dr. Sarvis said, I will, I will deliver most of it, not all of it. So I'm going to go over, which is on this sheet, some current enrollment numbers, the staffing levels that go along with that, and then I have some budget information. Um, the rest of it, as far as preferred practices and student achievement and board goals, we'll wait and let Joanne address that, or maybe I'll do that at a later date. Um, the professional development is pretty easy, so I'll just refer to that. It's basically meetings that occur on an ongoing basis. The staff meets with each one of the special groups, the different teaching groups, and, and classified and certificated, and they talk about best practices. They'll, you know, look at student cases in particular. And then both the elementary and the secondary districts provide Title II funding for conferences and such as they, as they need. So you'll see on the, if we start up with the elementary students, the pupil count, taken in December of this last year, oh, two thousand and seven, was six hundred and eight students, which is a, a percentage of the total enrollment at a little over ten, ten point seven, eight percent, so almost eleven percent of the students are identified as special ed, needing special services. And then you can see the breakdown by the disability below that, the highest being speech and language impairment at forty-one point four-five percent, and then specific learning disability at thirty-eight percent. And then the others are lower, nothing even reaching ten percent. In the secondary district-
Excuse me, there's some overlap here, isn't there? There's some kids that, children that are in more than one category?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
So the six hundred and eight, though, is the number of students, not?
That, that's unduplicated.
Right, that's the number of students, because that gives our percentage.
Yes.
Any other questions on elementary before I go on? Thank you for making that clarification, because that's true. Often, students have different, you know, they'll combine needs with their IEP. Uh, in the secondary district, there's twelve hundred and seventy-six students receiving special education services, which brings the percentage to twelve point fif- fifty-one percent. So a little bit higher in the secondary district. And one specific category, which is the specific learning disability, stands out as significantly higher at seventy-four point three, seven percent.
And actually, that was, I, when I sat down tonight, and I looked at this, I looked at the two hundred and thirty-three from the elementary.
Right.
And if there are, uh, approximately a third the number of students in elementary, as there are in secondary, five thousand students to fifteen, out to ten.
It's about half, half.
Okay, thank you. You're right, I'm not thinking. Um, just, the number seems awfully high.
It is huge.
It's huge.
And that's the right way to look at this, to look at the actual numbers. Uh, you would expect that at the elementary level, you'd have a lot more students in speech and language. Those get remediated, you don't have as many secondary students, but you wouldn't expect this kind of a discrepancy in the number of students in the elementary district who are identified as, uh, specific learning disability. As you say, as you said, the number of students in our elementary district is just half the number of students in the secondary district. And we don't have twice as many students in the secondary district with specific learning disability. We have four times as many in the secondary district.
Well, I, I know, I've been, I, I've asked this question before in the past, but I guess where are they coming from? Are they being identified as new students in seventh grade or in ninth grade? Or are they, uh, being identified as specific learning disability in a feeder district, and then we're inheriting them? I think it would be really, really important to have that breakdown, to see, you know, where these students are coming from, or when they're identified.
Off the cuff, I can, you know, say that there are a lot of identifications, right, at the tail end of an elementary experience, and then coming into our secondary district. Um, I would rather wait and give a report on that, or gi, give some particular numbers in a report like you asked for, kind of when is it happening? I mean, coming from, I, I've done a lot of work in secondary schools and principal of a middle school. You don't identify as many kids at that level, because, you know, you try to intervene early, and students are usually identified quite early, by third grade, fourth grade. Um, so this is striking. This number is quite striking.
And if I remember, when we looked at the, the numbers before, it was, it was particularly striking in one district, the number of identifications that took place in sixth grade.
Yes.
Which then raises the question, if you're identifying in sixth grade, do you not bear some responsibility for that child moving to seventh grade in our district? some responsibility for that child moving to 7th grade in our district? And I really think that's a conversation that we need to have with our feeder districts.
And I do know that conversation has begun. I've talked to Joanne Pulley about that, and I know that, that it has, there have been conversations, but I think there need to be many more. So, would you like me to bring back something that...
I would certainly like to see it, even in the, even in the board brief.
Okay.
Yeah, the presentation would be...
I was going to suggest that Joanne Pulley provide that at our very next meeting.
Sounds like a good idea.
Unless we can get it to you earlier in the board brief.
No, and then if we could also maybe get some staff input about, about possible next steps, I mean, what to do about, I mean, I see it as an issue. I certainly don't want to deny any student legitimate services, but identifying in 6th grade seems specious to me.
Okay. I knew that would bring some comments. And then, you go down to the staffing, and you can see our district office supports staff, the director, two coordinators, one program specialist, teacher on special assignment, and then our secretarial staff. And then, the staffing in the elementary, 24 teachers and 66.5 instructional assistants. The staffing at the secondary, then, the 56.6 FTEs for the teachers and the instructional assistants at 96. So, you can see there, there are more assistants in the elementary.
Are there unfilled positions?
There are still some unfilled positions, yes.
And how many, do you know, have any idea how many in each district?
I don't, I don't know, Chris isn't here.
Do these include the un...
No, these are the actual staffing that exist, the people.
So, there would be more if you had more people?
Right.
Well, if you look at the, the personnel listings, right now, there were a number of special ed instructional aid resignations, yeah.
Right, exactly. And then, the program specialists, you see at the secondary level, each one of the high schools has a program specialist in one of the junior highs. Then, the backside, the, we call them DIS staff, the designated instructional support. You can see that the largest number, of course, is psychologists at 18. And we have 21 schools, because we do service our charter schools with special ed. So, there's not a psychologist for each school, but, you know, we, we do some sharing. And then, the speech and language, we have 11 teachers. And I think you know, in, in a, I think it was two or three years ago, we had to go out and hire, contract out, and it was over $100,000. And so, we have our own teachers. We hired the last one not that long ago. So, we, it's a need that continually comes up, speech and language. We no longer have a program at UCSB, so it's difficult to find teachers for that. Any questions on staffing? Yes, I can...
I, I just had a quick clarification under interpreter transcriber. Is that, does that six cover everything? Is, it's not just specifically for adapted PE, is it?
No, no, I don't know. I, I looked at that too, and I wasn't quite sure why it was sitting over there.
Okay.
Do you know? Yeah. I, I mean, I don't believe, so I could check on that. It seems odd that it would be only in adapted PE, yeah. I think that's maybe more toddler, should have been a different line.
You know, it'd be very helpful if these data were disaggregated by grade.
For the...
As apropos of, of what Mrs. Hart was talking about, to some extent, but trying to see how these numbers change by grade. Because it's this hu, these hu, this huge drop from six, you know, from elementary to secondary, but you're grouping the other 7th graders and 9th to 12th graders, it'd be nice to see what's happening between 6ths and 7ths.
You're talking about the number of students identified and where the grades are?
Yeah.
Okay. So, like, for instance, in the secondary that...
Well, I would hope it would smooth the curve out a little bit.
I think, I believe that there was a chart we shared before that did show some of that, so, okay, and the...
A personnel question that you won't be able to answer, but it would be a question for Dr. Robertson, and that is, do we have any connections to schools that have speech and language programs? Institutions of higher learning. For instance, the University of Redlands has a, a speech and learning major. Are we in touch with those schools? Do we advertise in their career centers? Do you see what I'm saying?
That's a good, good question. My feeling is probably so only given the fact, because we had to search high and low, and this particular thing was from Florida, we finally found. But, but that's a good question to ask, I don't know for sure, yeah.
Refresh my memory a little bit, we've had reports that raise questions between, about whether some people were classified as having specific learning disabilities or, or at heart reading, reading problems.
The difference be, within that ca, which is a large category, it, it covers a lot of different learning disabilities.
Yeah.
Would you like, you want to know, like, which ones are specifically for reading? I don't know if that's...
Well, the criticism is often, has been made, that, that many people who are in these, in these categories really have reading problems. And that, in fact, the people who are teaching them in special ed are not trained as reading teachers. And I mean, there was this argument from five years ago. And I, and I don't know whether that, and Ruth Green used to make that very cogently.
The Tucker Study and the impetus for our response to intervention.
I think, I think Bob's point about getting a breakdown grade by grade, if what he's saying is true and if we are doing our job, there might be a large number in kindergarten and first grade, and then it would drop off dramatically in second, third, fourth grade. So, I think the numbers might reveal something.
Right, I mean, typically, of course, there are more in English Language Arts and in reading. One of our challenges is identifying when it's a language issue for English learners and, you know, is it, is it something within the speech and language?
Exactly.
And that language type of assessment versus...
And that's been always a problem, isn't it?
Right.
There's a gray area there where the kid is, should really be treated as an English learner rather than a, a kid with a reading, with a, with a learning disability.
Mm-hmm. We're, that's one of the areas where the professional development's taking place, because people are learning more and more and more. As we have more English learners in our state and around the country, it's, you know, becoming clear how to identify the differences there.
Is RTI lowering these figures?
That's, you know what, I, the, the number of identified students?
Yeah.
I would say at the two schools where we're, well, actually, three schools, Roosevelt has been using an RTI model for a long time, I would say yes, definitely so.
Keeping people out of, I mean, that's what it's about, right?
Yes, what I'd like, yes, what I would like, well, it's one of the, it's not really about keeping kids out of being identified. What it's about is intervening early and filling in the gaps, filling in the needs the students have so that...
I'm glad you corrected me, I don't want to keep them out of being identified.
Right, it's so that...
But I want to solve their problems before they're identified.
Right, because then you're not going two or three years and all of a sudden, there's a huge gap. You're identifying the, you know, the need early, you're giving the targeted assistance, and in many cases, students then don't need to have special services.
Is there a high school application for an RTI-type?
There are some models that people are looking at, certainly. Yes, there are. I, not anything that we're using currently in our district.
In fact, actually, in fact, the board, the board, yeah, exactly. The board approved a pilot study at La Cuesta for an alternative study of RTI through Matt McCaffrey and his association with UCSB and a doctorate student. So, I think he's probably about three-quarters of the way through and probably edging out end of April, he'll come back with a report.
I happened to be at Franklin the other day, and in the principal's office, Carol was going over with her psychologist some of the data, current data on RTI. And they were extremely pleased with the, the data that was showing kids really improving in reading and huge jumps. And in particular, using Reading Naturally, which is a, a Read Naturally, which is a program that's in our district a lot. So, I could, we'll bring back some response to intervention data soon.
Yeah, I just look, this 12.51%, I, I mean, I've always thought that this is supposed to be 10%, more or less, that's, that's where it lies, yeah. And I have one last question, it's really, Mr. Smith and I talked about it, and as enroll, we have to do maintenance of effort, okay? But as enrollment declines, does that ease, release us from some obligation under maintenance of effort and therefore create a possibility of reducing the encroachment?
To the degree that your special ed population declines, but sometimes you see a situation where you have enrollment decline, but your special, special education population increases. So, that's one of the things you want to monitor, is to see if your special education population is declining in proportion to your overall student population.
Are we, are we doing that?
Are we looking at the portion and...
Monitoring it.
Yes.
Because it, because in, you know, we're, it's starting to hit, you know, I mean, it's been hitting at the elementary level, but now at the secondary level. It'd be nice if we could make some adjustments in this maintenance of efforts level.
That's something that we have to look at every year, and there's a special report that even looks at that. Speaking of money, though, I haven't, yes. Any other questions on staffing and all before I hit the money part?
I had a question, I guess it's not on staffing, it's, but it's on the numbers that we were talking about. And I think, I just feel like we need to make it clear how we're talking about these numbers. Because when we talk about interventions, lowering the numbers who are identified, that contradicts the, the definition of a learning disability. Because a learning disability is not only performance, it's processing. And we're not going to, typically, we don't talk about, I don't, I don't even know what word to use, about changing the disability. You talk about the students learning the accom, how to accommodate it, they learn their, their, the learning strategy so that they can accommodate their disability. And so, I'm, I'm wondering, when we talk about lowering the numbers of students who are identified, what we're really talking is lowering the number of students who are identified as needing the additional assistance. Is that correct?
That's correct. What often happens is, you know, the, the wait and see or the discrepancy model is that you have to be, you know, two years behind before you're even, you know, looked at. And so, within that, I mean, if there's a learning disability, clearly, a student's going to need special services. But many times, students are brought into, they, they may be identified as needing special services, and there might be a slight learning disability involved, and you can identify that. But if you're, if you intervene early, right in the very beginning stages of reading, quite often, if you provide that student with all the services needed and the compensating skills, they may not be eventually identified as a special education student, because they've learned how to work with that specific learning disability, and it may be very minor. So, it's not eliminating any student at all that needs special services based on a learning need or a specific disability. But it's really clearly identifying those students who do and those students who really need additional support and maybe more tutoring and that kind of thing.
Thank you, because I think that distinction is really important.
But would it be especially true for speech and language, where your teaching skills, they no longer need that?
Right.
Well, there's, I mean, there's inherent uncertainty in the, in the process, and there's error.
Sure.
You're putting, you're identifying some people who shouldn't be and failing to identify some who should. The latter costs you lawsuits. I mean, if you want, you want to not have it, you want to minimize the error.
Sure.
And that's what I thought RTI was about, was it really worked, it kind of worked in that area of, well, these people are not, we could do something now that will make, that will keep them from being identified.
Right.
I hear, you're saying part of that is solving, I hear, what I hear when you say that, it's like it's, there's a complex interaction between the kinds of skills that are involved.
Right, and, and really, basically, without going too far into it, the, the RTI has the whole screening process where you look at almost all students and then identify the kids who are behind, then you give the extra tutoring, the, the training, the skills, and that targeted intervention. And then, those kids who still aren't getting it with that, then they raise to a different, it's the tiered model, as you know.
It also fulfills your obligation to search and serve, doesn't it not?
Absolutely.
We have a public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, you have the update.
I wanted to add, unless you're not interested in the money and the encroachment.
Very interested in money.
I just have some figures on, from First Interim on the general fund contributions and encroachment for special ed. So, in the elementary district, and it's divided between federal and state, but a combined total in the elementary is 2,125,947. You don't have that anywhere, so it's, it's 2 million, it's basically 2,126,000, 100,000, excuse me.
So, what you're saying, that's the amount that the general fund's contributing to special ed?
Elementary.
Elementary.
Secondary is 5,564,897. 5 million, 564,000, 897. That's combined, then, is 7,383,901. And then, would you like me to add the special ed transportation onto that?
Yeah.
That really goes through one district only, which is the secondary district, it just runs through that district. And that encroachment is 277,544. For a grand total of 7,661,445. Encroachment to the general...
The encroachment is only at the secondary transportation.
That's how it's run through, it's run through that district. That's my understanding.
So, considerable portion of the 12 million that we just saw.
So, that is the encroachment to the unrestricted general fund.
And add to that the unfavorable position of special education in the governor's budget proposal, which provides smaller quota.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt anybody. I have, I have a question, and it's probably a legal question, and it gets back to the conversation that we were having earlier. If we use our own process to identify gate students when they enter our schools at the secondary level, in 7th grade or in 9th grade, from, you know, another district or from a private school, could we use our own testing to identify special ed students? Or is that illegal? If students identified in 6th grade, we must accept that, that identification?
The IEP's in place and the team is, you know, there's been a lot of assessment that goes into that.
Okay.
But aren't, are those locally developed assessments?
No, no, they're standard, very standard, right. And, you know, of course, they're reviewed, and there's triennial assessments, and, you know, it's constantly being looked at as far as how the student is progressing.
My question, Mr. Smith again, maintenance of effort, I find that so troubling. You, we can cut everything in the budget, but we can't cut anything here, because by definition, you have to spend what you spent last year.
With a few exceptions, as we went over. I mean, if you have the same level of service provided by a lower cost, you can get around it to some extent there. I mean, if you have a proportional decline in special ed students relative to your general or total student population, discontinuance of NPA or MPS placements, high cost, things like that, but it's, it's very limited.
How does it work for transportation? That's where I was going.
Well, one of the issues with transportation, both with home-to-school and special ed transportation, and I'm not sure about special ed transportation relative to the maintenance of effort requirement, I'd have to do some research on that. But remember, you can never reduce your encroachment lower, you can never go beyond zeroing out your encroachment. So, let's say it's $230,000 of encroachment in special ed transportation. Once you reduce your expenditures lower than that, you have to at least expense what your apportionment is from the state, or they reduce it in the subsequent year.
I'd be happy to be able to do that.
But I'm not sure how special ed transportation ties in to the whole maintenance of effort.
I mean, some of the, the lot, the, the maintenance of effort logic just, it seems at some point even wasteful, if you take it literally. And I'd love to learn more about that.
You know, on the transportation part, what strikes me is, of course, that's IEP-driven, and you have certain students who need transportation. So, as, as kids matriculate out of our system, you know, it could be a certain group of kids that need it.
So, you don't have to spend the money next year unless, unless you have to spend it for maintenance of effort, which would be absurd.
Yeah, and I'm not sure you do, I just want to be sure with my answer before I respond to that.
What Eric just told you reminded me of one bright spot in education. What Eric just told you reminded me of one bright spot in education, we have very few non-public school MPS placements. I believe we're down to two.
Yeah, and, and for this size of district, that's impressive.
That is. Non-public school placements, private school placements.
Oh, yeah.
Cause those, yeah, cause those'll cost you thirty to fifty thousand dollars a pop.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Parker.
What I would like to know, uh, is how, when you're talking about the budget and the, um, the contribution from the general fund and all that, how does that relate to the SELPA? Um, how, how does that all tie together? We make a contribution to SELPA, the SELPA provides services, what's, how does that work?
I'm gonna give you an oversimplified version of this, but several years ago, there used to be what was called a J-50 model, special ed funding model, which was basically really enrollment-driven, and basically, there was, at that point in time, a kind of incentive to over-identify students with special ed. Well, there was a radical reform, you know, to the special ed funding model, and AB-602 was a piece of legislation that did that. So Assembly Bill 602, in a lot of TMs, you'll hear AB-602 funding model, AB-602 entitlement, whatever the case may be. What happened was, the state took away those incentives and basically said, on a SELPA basis, we're going to give you X amount of dollars, and it kind of works like a revenue limit entitlement, but in this particular case, you have what was the old special ed master plan, which is the state apportionment leg, you have federal funding sources, which is PL-94142, and then local property taxes. In aggregate, you don't get any more than you're entitled SELPA-wide. How it's distributed among and between the SELPA members is a local governance issue relative to the SELPA. So what I'm saying is, an AB-602 plan here might look substantially different than it does in Fresno or San Luis Obispo County, based on the governance structure that was established and the formulas that were adopted when AB-602 was originally implemented.
Now, let me, let me piggyback on that, because our SELPA has a homegrown structure and formula with a number of columns, and, and we'd be happy to show that to you. Last spring, uh, out of concern that our district wasn't receiving its fair share, I asked for a review of that formula, and the SELPA brought in Paul Goldfinger from School Services of California. He did a study, looked at a number of factors, didn't really come up with the ideal plan whereby no district would suffer, in other words, there'd be a change in fortune for those districts, but he did provide a number of alternatives, and the Coordinating Council for SELPA is currently looking at those funding models. Although, I have to say that secondary districts are not particularly well-represented, there are only a couple of secondary districts. Here, the Santa Inez is served by five feeder elementary districts, uh, we are served by five feeder elementary districts, the same thing happens in Santa Maria, so there are only a couple of secondary districts, or three secondary districts, excuse me, there are actually more, with Carpinteria as a K-12, and, yeah, Lompoc, that's right. But there's a, there's quite an abundance of elementary districts, and, and the, without having Joanne Pulley as our director serving on that coordinating council, we will have difficulty in that review. I've asked for Eric's help in that review, and we do need to ensure representation so that we're at the table during that review.
When you talk about representation, are, is this something that gets voted on by?
Eventually gets voted on, and I've been serving on the JPA, as you know, for, for the last two years. I was just replaced with Kathy Boomer from Galita.
Why is not every district represented on the JPA?
The JPA board is just like this board, and there are seven members, and, and they represent South County, North County, various districts.
I guess it seems to me that if you're, if you have something, if you're talking about the coordinating group, uh, there should be some sort of proportional weight to the voting, if you're talking about a district with a hundred students and a district with five thousand students.
There isn't.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Maybe you ought to start going to SELPA meetings, the JPA meetings.
Well, this is a huge area. You, you just heard the encroachment, two million dollars in the elementary district, five and a half million dollars in the secondary district. This is a big area, and it has a huge consequence on our overall budget. So this is something that is worth us spending a lot of time and attention on.
Well, I got in trouble with the special ed teachers, out of ignorance, I didn't understand maintenance of effort some years ago, remember? And I, and I thought, well, let's start, we need to examine that budget, and room filled up very quickly.
Although, when we have declining enrollment.
And they talk to me about maintenance of effort very quickly.
When we do have declining enrollment, and it presents an opportunity for us.
Did I read somewhere that maintenance of effort was SELPA-wide?
That's correct.
Yes.
And then the SELPA decides how it gets spread around?
And remember, the SELPA, the maintenance of effort is also on a statewide basis. So what happens is, the state has to demonstrate to the feds that they spent at least last year's expenditure level to meet their MOE requirement in a demonstration to the feds.
Okay, the, the SELPA, now, below the SELPA, I thought there was discretion, depending on, that each SELPA could decide on formulas itself.
Yeah, it's specific to each, remember, the MOE is based on last year's baseline, so obviously, that's gonna differ from SELPA to SELPA. So not every SELPA spends the exact same amount, because they've got different funding entitlements.
Quick, oh, go ahead.
No, I, I think I could ask all night and never understand all this.
Quick procedural question. Um, would it ever be appropriate for a board member to attend, um, a SELPA JPA meeting?
Yes.
And, and make public comment, or, you know, request information, or just to ensure that, that, you know, this process is, um, that they follow through on some of these possible solutions that Paul Goldfinger suggested? Yes, and if so, when are the JPA meetings?
I'll get you that schedule.
Thank you.
We have a public comment, let's do that. Lane Wheeler.
Typically, first Monday of each month.
Fred.
Hi, Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association, I just want to respond to the, uh, speech and language question that Ms. Harder raised. I sit on a board for the California Teachers Association on special ed issues, and at the last meeting I attended in January, a figure of, a shortage of five thousand speech and language teachers in the state of California was, uh, passed along as the most reliable number at this point, without a lot of educational programs being out there to supply that need. Collaboratively with the, uh, Teacher Association in the district, we negotiated in the last contract, a MOU to allow full years of credit service for speech and language people as a recruitment inducement to be brought into our district, and I think that helped at least fill the immediate need that was not being met. So we are doing that, but I, in my other activities, I hear of all the local counties, Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis, doing similar things, and other school districts doing similar things, so, you know, it's a twofold problem in that regard. Also, I've completed a study of our contract language on RTI, and how the contract is being impacted by the two RTI programs, and I'll be happy to bring back and share with you, it's, I think, somewhat revealing. So, just a piece of information and a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. We have one more thing on, one more item on our agenda, but are we going to skip this, or you're presenting this as well?
If you'd like to take a break, we do have defibrillators, defibrillators, and we need to have a policy in place, but you.
Let's take a break first, yeah, let's take a break, and then we'll come back.
Good.
Timer to the time?
The time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion, or actually a request? Can we do item F-5 before F-4, since there, I know that, for instance, Ms. Stern is here on F-5?
Sure, yes, and that was supposed to be at nine fifteen, and we're already so far behind, okay. Uh, yes, so F-5, proposed Santa Barbara School District Discipline Guidelines and Dress Code, no, yes, so we're gonna have to wait for the defibrillators, I hope no one has a problem here.
We've waited this long. And Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Compliance, will. They can be your friends.
Thank you very much. Earlier this year, we convened a Committee of Assistant Principals to guide, to put together some guidelines for our school administrators on how to deal appropriately with violations of the Education Code and Board Policy. It was also an attempt to bring about uniformity to the Discipline Guide. Concurrently, we also asked them to work on a dress code for the district, and what you have before you is the first draft of those documents. I will share with you that both documents have been reviewed by council, uh, the office of, Craig Price's office reviewed both documents, Michael Blatchers also reviewed some aspects of the Discipline Guide. I want to publicly acknowledge the work of the committee, that includes Roxanna Stern, who's sitting here with us this evening, it also includes Lito Garcia, it also includes Dave Meister and Bud Andrews, who worked on this document. Again, what it is, it's, uh, it's a guide, a discipline guide, that once you folks approve it, would become embedded in all, uh, school, uh, discipline guides, and would be used by the administrators, uh, as they mete out, uh, discipline for violations of the Education Code. There was, uh, in the dress code, there was several, um, suggestions that were originally drafted, that were reviewed by council, and we were advised not to proceed with them, and I just want to share one of them, for example. Uh, the, the committee felt that it was important to make a statement regarding athletic wear, and there was actually a provision in the draft that you have not seen, that would have banned athletic wear. District staff did not believe that that would be legal, and indeed, um, the attorneys involved also ruled it as not being appropriate. I can see from some of the expressions that I should explain further, there are occasions at some schools, hopefully not within our own district, where gang attire is associated with a particularly professional team. And so our, our committee, our discipline committee, took a very proactive stance and said, maybe you ought to ban all athletic wear. But it became a very sticky constitutional issue, what constitutes, uh, professional attire that should be banned? And so, uh, the decision was finally made to pull that item altogether from the draft that you see before you. I also want to share with you that item number seven on the, as I've shared previously with the board, and I shared last year, uh, at the outset, let me share with you that the recommendation I'm making to the board is not, uh, has not been accepted widely by our administration staff. As a matter of fact, uh, almost every single administrator that has responded by email or in writing is opposed to changing, uh, the consequences for number seven. As I draw your attention to number seven, I don't have the overhead set up right now, but item number seven has to do with possession under the influence and use of marijuana. Currently, for the first, um, offense, it's a five-day suspension and a referral to the Super Two program. The second offense in our district right now includes a five-day suspension and a recommendation to expel. I have, as you can see in the memo written to you, I have suggested that we modify the second offense, that at the second offense, the student be obligated to go through an intensive substance abuse program and mandatory testing, and that on the third, uh, uh, suspension for possession, use, or under the influence, that we, uh, indeed institute the five-day suspension and the recommendation to expel.
And that recommendation has my concurrence as well.
Thank you. I, I will share with you Michael Blatchers' take, y'all are familiar with Michael, with Michael. Michael has reviewed this individual item, and, um, he does not much object to a district policy that the second time you're involved with possession under the influence or use, that you be expelled, recommended for expulsion. However, he has cautioned that he does believe that it's probably inappropriate to combine the junior high experience with the high school experience in considering that, and he has asked, um, staff and the board to take a look at that, that, and essentially, it comes down to, if we, uh, continue to combine the junior high and high school experience, the default position becomes what I'm currently recommending, that on the third strike, or the third violation, that you would be subject for expulsion. Um, I think I'll stop there and answer any questions you might have, and Dave is back, and we can put it up on the, up on the overhead.
Thanks, Mr. Gonzalez. Um, I, my only concern about making the alteration to number seven, and I agree with Mr. Blatchers' recommendation that we not be combining the junior high infraction with the high school infraction, but my concern is that, that this, that communication of this will be simply reduced to, oh, you know, now it's not two strikes and you're out, it's three strikes and you're out. I guess I would want to make certain that the communication was extremely clear, that there are, um, successive, um, steps being put in place that are more and more burdensome as you move along, so that it's a progressive, um, process, which is, as you recommend, it's about making the communication clear, that it's this, you know, progressive, um, kind of process.
Well, I, I agree with you. One of the impetuses for convening this committee is that, um, last year, we found that, uh, the discipline consequences at each of our junior high and high schools began to deviate from, uh, policy that was established some twelve years ago, and, um, the point is that we need to be, uh, somewhat uniform. We have to look at every case individually, but we have to have very uniform guidelines, and, and yes, we would have to, um, make sure that, uh, all members, all stakeholders involved, um, took a good look at this and agreed to it. What we have up on the, up on the overhead right now is the proposed, uh, consequences for number seven, as suggested by the committee, and again, I want to be very clear with you that, uh, almost all administrators have communicated with us, both assistant principals and principals are in agreement and do not want us to change, I want to be very clear with you about that. This is, uh, the suggestion that I am making for number seven, and just to review that very quickly, under the first offense, it would include a five-day suspension, a referral to another appropriate program, parent conferences, mandatory counseling, for example, the Super Program, and/or teen court services to be completed forty-five school days, within forty-five school days. It's not said well there, but currently, our practice is, if you do not complete the Super Program within forty-five days, you are subject for an involuntary transfer. Also, law enforcement is notified. The suggestions I'm, uh, the change I'm suggesting, at the second offense, a five-day suspension and referral to substance abuse intervention program with mandatory drug testing, random drug testing, I might add, and then the third or additional offense would not be tolerated. At the third offense, we, uh, would impose the five-day suspension and the recommendation to expel. I, I might share this, I, I know that I've explained to the board my position on this before, and I'll simply state it is that, under our present policies, I'm not convinced that it meets the definition of, are there any other means of correction? I don't think that simply, uh, referring a student to Super Two without having them go through a intensive intervention program that includes mandatory testing meets that test, uh, of, are there any other means of correction? I think if we move in this direction, that we do meet that definition, and I would have no reservations about recommend- no reservations about recommending the expulsion of a student for a third violation. But again, for the third time, I want to be clear that currently, our school administrators are not in support of this change.
I guess, and I think, you know, generally speaking, board members want to be able to support school administrators. But we often see conflicting recommendations, even from school administrators, you know, depending on who the student is or the student's particular circumstances. So, even the way the policy reads now is not uniformly enforced with the second drug offense, or the recommendation, I should say, is not necessarily uniform.
Could I, since we're talking about that topic, if I can interject, can we add into the second offense also something about random searches? Put that there. Also, I had a question about the, you said that you're going to divide off junior high and high school. Does that mean, then, that a student could have two in junior high and then go to high school and start over again and have three in high school? And so, it's not until they have the fifth time that they would get suspended, they would get expelled?
We did not explore the specifics of that. And with your direction, we would make sure that the policy would not permit that. I think Michael's point is readily understood in this way, that if I'm in the seventh grade and I drank alcohol, and for three years, I am drug-free, at least I'm not caught at a school function or school activity under the influence, and in my junior year, I smoke marijuana or I'm caught drinking at a football game, that currently, that violates our substance abuse policy and recommends me for expulsion. Michael believes that the length of time between those two violations is too long. But we did not put forth a specific consequence addressing that particular situation. Instead, I chose to make the recommendation that you see before you.
The other, could it be added that the second offense, it's up to the administrator, that there might be situations where it's so blatant, we've seen some situations which really did call for expulsion. Is that, under this, could they do that still?
There, we, I would advise that we add additional language to make sure that all stakeholders understand that this is a reference guide and that each case by law is to be considered on its individual merits. And in no way would we want to take away an administrator's right, so to speak, to make a recommendation for a first-time offense. And we would make sure at the next meeting, we would bring back wording to make sure that that's widely understood by students and staff and parents.
It's just really a quick question. Before we move forward with this, do we need to have a conversation with partners in the community who provide these services to see if they have the capability of perhaps receiving a larger influx of students to these kinds of programs?
Conversation would be appropriate. One of the things that surprises me tonight is that we were contacted by the Santa Barbara Teen Legal Clinic, probably one month ago, who said that they were in agreement with this three-strike, so to speak, kind of approach, and that they had met with Edward Quay of the Fighting Back CADA organization and were in support of this recommendation, and were working a document to submit to you folks in support of that and what the intervention would look like. We never received that document, and I think it would be appropriate to make contact with them before you folks give the final okay.
May I comment as well? I spent time talking to Tara Holland Ford about this. What we need to do is change this behavior. And expulsion doesn't always accomplish that. But we must change the behavior, and we have to have interventions in place that afford us some possibility of doing that. The threat in this case to other students is not as great. This isn't an assault, it's not an attack, it's not someone lighting fires or brandishing a weapon. But it is a student who's a harm to themselves, and unless we intervene and do change the behavior, I don't think, well, I don't think we do the student justice just by saying, that's it, you had one try, or one shot at the intervention, and now you're expelled.
Okay. Excuse me. I also wanted to just comment on Ms. Blatcher's addition to the second offense. I'm not entirely comfortable with adding random searches without having some discussion with, perhaps with Michael, about the legality of that.
Certainly.
So, that said.
Well, please know that any suggestions you give us regarding these kind of policies are always sent to council before they're sent back to you. And so, we would have a legal perspective about the random search issue, yes.
I also had a question about some of the other items here.
Before you get to that, can I chime in on this one?
Yes, yes, that's what I was.
Can you tell us, Mr. Gonzalez, what was the primary concern for school administrators?
I'd like to hear from them.
I would like you to hear from them, and I do not want to put Ms. Stern on the spot, but if she would be willing to come up here. Principal Craig Morgan has been very clear that he is not in support of the recommendation I'm making, and I think Roxanna can speak to the issue. Roxanna?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and I don't feel put on the spot. I have been working with this committee throughout this school year, and so, there has been much communication, email, also in person, at assistant principal meetings, and whenever assistant principals do get together at our school site administration meetings. When working with students, we're working with juveniles, we're working with people who are going to make mistakes, and our goal is to help them learn from those mistakes and move on and have a successful, productive life when they leave high school. And sometimes, the mistakes that they make are more serious than others. They do endanger their own health and safety, and unfortunately, endanger the health and safety of others. With that said, yes, as a school site, as at other school sites within the district as well, when we have a student who's found to be under the influence or in possession of a controlled substance, we do implement the responses that you see in the discipline guide for the first offense, where students do receive five-day suspension, they are removed from being around other students. They're typically placed in an on-campus intervention center, so they have access to youth service specialists from CADA, so they have access to their own guidance counselors. If they happen to be special education students, they have access to their case managers and to their instructional services. So, there's really the full-court press put into place for students immediately following an offense. Parents are brought in. After the suspension, a reinstatement conference is held where expectations for behavior are put in writing for the student and a contract is signed. And they're advised, this is quite serious. If this happens again, we need to make a drastic change, because clearly, being in this setting isn't working. You're taking risks that do put yourself mostly at risk, but we have to consider the safety of other students. And students who are under the influence aren't always in control of their faculties. If they're 16, 17 years old, they are driving to school, and they might be driving to school under the influence of alcohol or drugs, and that's something we need to take into consideration as well. Thus, the drastic response is necessary. The Super Program is a counseling program for both parents and students, but parents don't need to only make use of the Super Program. There are other services that are available through CADA. Pardon me, there's a mouse running.
We're going to adjourn for just a second, if that's okay.
Did you let him out?
No, he's right there.
You got the hammer.
I did.
This is kind of ironic, since we're Mickey Marcus. I don't think he was under the influence. He looked fully in control of his faculties.
I want to compliment you on your ability to remain calm.
Thank you. The chair looked tempting. Back to the matter at hand, we do, we are here every day because we care about students, we care about their safety. When they demonstrate risk-taking behavior, we want to intervene on their behalf. We have to balance the needs of the individual student who is in crisis with the needs of the student population as a whole, with their safety. And for those reasons, assistant principals have, uniformly, and principals have spoken out and said, this policy that we have, where on the second offense, the student is expelled from the district, and typically, that term is for one year, that is a policy that has been helpful to maintaining safety on our campuses, and that is why we do stand by it. And again, we're not simply asking parents, okay, go to the Super Program and nothing else. There is a whole suite of services that's available from CADA. And I know CADA will work with each individual family on a case-by-case basis and put any interventions in place that need to be there to support families and students.
Can I, thank you. Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
I seem to remember talking to assistant principal at one point, who said that the kids, it's a very difficult thing to find kids doing this. It's hard to verify it, it's hard to know for sure if they're under the influence or not. And that his argument, I guess, for keeping it the way it is, is that they may, that they may be doing it over and over again, and that what you're doing is you're just catching them at certain times, and you're lucky to catch them in some ways. Does that argument make sense?
I hesitate to use the word lucky. When students are engaged in risk-taking behavior as serious as coming to school under the influence, chances are, they have been using for a long period of time, and they've taken many steps to conceal their substance use from their friends, their family members, and from their teachers. When the situation has become so dire that it's obvious that they're under the influence at school, yes, chances are, it has happened many times before. And I would say the only reason that we are in any way lucky that we're catching the students is we're realizing that this is a student in crisis, and we are now able to step in and intervene. A lot of times, we do find out that students use substances, but we don't catch them at school, we still put interventions in place. Maybe they confide in a teacher, maybe they confide in an assistant principal or a guidance counselor. We will put services in place for them, and certainly, our goal isn't to punish them. But when the substance use happens at school, the education code is very clear that that is something that compromises everyone's health and safety and can't continue.
I have a question regarding your, you said that your experience, or your colleague, the experience of your colleagues, is such that this, the policy, the way it's stated now, is, I assume you're saying, is working? And that it is sort of preventing students from being on campus in this, under the influence, or in possession? And I'm wondering if, if you feel that it's working in stopping the students from using the substance?
If it were working 100%, we would never have students suspended for drug and alcohol use, and unfortunately, that's not reality. We have students who are in crisis for a variety of reasons, and turning to substances becomes a coping mechanism, clearly, an unhealthy coping mechanism. Our method for communicating these guidelines for students, we've got a variety of ways that we do that. We distribute a student-parent handbook to our students prior to the start of school. We ask families to sign an acknowledgement that they've reviewed the student-parent handbook. It has information about general issues pertaining to the school, such as parking, lockers, school dances, activities. But also, a discipline guide that looks much like this is published, so that families are made aware of what is appropriate at school and what is certainly not appropriate, what the causes for suspension and expulsion are. Additionally, schools hold assemblies with students where they communicate these policies, these expectations. And the tone of those assemblies are, we want you to do well, we want you to be successful here, if you're having difficulty, we want to help you. But please be aware, this kind of behavior is not okay at school, and it will be responded to accordingly. And so, this is reiterated with students. And again, it's, students are not recommended for expulsion generally on a first offense, it's on a second offense after they've had interventions, because that shows that there is a pattern, an unsafe pattern, that is continuing, that compromises others' safety.
I guess my question is more about, I mean, I think we're, we all sort of feel this quandary, if you will, that we certainly want to give students the message that being under the influence of any sort of substance, controlled substance on campus, or even being in possession, is not appropriate, and we want to curtail that behavior. But at the same time, one of the, one of the things that I find somewhat appealing about the alternative that's being proposed is that it offers an additional step in terms of intervention and working with the student. Because my, to be honest, my dilemma is, I don't want the students to just not be on campus under the influence, I want them to not be under the influence, which I'm sure we all, all of us would agree with that. So, you know, it's like, sometimes, I feel like we're just, you know, okay, so they're not driving to San Marcos or Santa Barbara High School or DP under the influence, but they're driving to El Puente instead, under the influence, or they're driving someplace else under the influence. One of the things I like about the proposal that's being given to us tonight is that there's another step in actually trying to stop the behavior, not just on campus, but for the student in general. And I'm, I mean, that's my, that's sort of my dilemma, is to be, sort of, send a tough message versus doing something that I think.
I think this.
Is also supportive of the student and likely to change the behavior, not just move the location.
Right. The discipline policy as proposed to you is not intended to be a limitation on school officials, it's not intended to mean this is the only thing you can do for a student. Perhaps a counterproposal from the committee could be that on the first step, we could say, referral to Super Program and/or what's listed here in the second offense, the mandatory drug, an intensive intervention service with mandatory drug testing, so that that would give the school official more recommendations of interventions to take place on a first offense, depending on the severity of the first offense, and that we still maintain that on the second offense, there is a recommendation for expulsion. Because that was communication that I received from a number of assistant principals, where they said, they support a two-strike, if you will, process with more interventions after the first strike. And it sounds to me like maybe that's what you're asking for as well.
Although, as part of the expulsion process, usually, there, if it's a substance abuse issue, they are required to have drug and alcohol treatments in order to come back into the district.
I just wonder what the evidence is that the present policy is not working. It's sort of a, it's a hard, it's kind of a counterfactual to prove, isn't it? Unless you, unless you change the policy, you're not going to know how, what's happening with the policy.
I could not present you evidence that the existing policy is not working outside of what I'm going to share with you. You folks are privy to closed-session expulsion recommendations, and as one of you noted, there is great inconsistency at the current time. I appreciate the fact that our schools have this kind of guideline, but on an operational level, the recommendations that are brought to you, you have seen the inconsistencies involved in the current policy, even from those folks who have stated publicly they are not in support of this change. Second, I have shared with you in the past that in any one year, we have between 103 to 115 students that are recommended for expulsion in, among the 15,000 students. And of those, about 71 to 73 are actually expelled. The great bulk of those are about substance abuse. I have the opportunity to meet with the students when they petitioned to return back to the district, and I am amazed how often they have completed rehabilitation plan as stated, as mandated by the board, but have not really taken care of their substance abuse problem. Period. I don't think I can go beyond that.
Do you have data from any other districts that we might compare to?
No, we don't. We would need to, we could research that for you, but no.
We may be, we may be one of the best.
I know that we are one of the best. Given.
I raise all these questions because it's very hard to assess the effectiveness of deterrence. And the proposed change is a weakening of deterrence. And. And, and my prediction would be that that would, in fact, increase the incidence rather than decrease it. Because, because I'm offering the hypothesis that deterrence is the main, the main thing that, that deters. The threat is what deters.
I think it's appropriate, your suggestions, that we speak with our stakeholders in the community and get their take on this proposed change. I would not encourage you to make that change until we've had an opportunity to speak with CADA. Again, I'm surprised that they weren't here tonight, but-
I want to hear from the administrators more. I mean, it's not, Ms. Stern is an articulate spokesperson, and I'd like to hear from Santa Barbara High School and those fellows.
We can have them at the next meeting.
Other issues, maybe we should go on.
No, one more quick question that might create other iterations of suggested policy. And that is, did Michael Blatcher indicate a prohibition against any kind of combination of junior high and high school offense? Could that be a feature of it? In other words, one in junior high would not then trigger a second high school? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, and, and we could approach Michael and come back to you with a similar chart, taking into consideration Michael's comments. Sure, that'd be very appropriate.
Is there any other part to this policy? Should we talk about any other portion of it?
Yes. I had a, I had several, actually. Number 10 and 11, I had a question about why expulsion would not be listed as a possibility for terrorist threats and setting fire. Those seem like very, like, I mean, there's a poss, there's the, there's the, it seems like there's a range.
Right.
You, you could, something could be construed as a terrorist threat that, in reality, is somewhat minor or sort of offhand or careless. But if it were a serious terrorist threat, if it were a serious fire that a student set, that it seems to me that expulsion would be an option on the first offense.
I'm glad you're pointing that out. If you take a look under the first off, see if we can go a little bit further down? I just need, if you take a look under the first offense, number 10, and now slide up to number 10, you can see that it does say possible recommendation for expulsion, depending on the circumstances. That is built in for the first offense. However, I want to share with you that the proving an incident to be a terroristic threat is a very difficult issue. Our attorneys have cautioned us against making a recommendation to expel based on a violation of 48900.7, because legally, it's very difficult to prove. In number 11, you will find that there is no specific education code citation for fire setting. Instead, what we've done is, we've labeled it under the category generally of K, disruption to the school, to a school activity, because the ed code doesn't speak about fire setting. Our experiences in the district have been that some fire settings are pretty minimal and non-consequential. Others are significant the first time. And as you know, our administrators have been very firm in making that recommendation the first time.
Okay.
So wouldn't we want language to reflect that under the first offense for fire setting, that there was, that recommendation for expulsion was possible?
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I also had, and I stand corrected on number 10. I was reading it the same way as I was reading number 11. Number 12, I wondered if we might not include for, because it's hate crime and bias-related incident, if we might not include under the first offense, some sort of counseling and maybe completion of some sort of program, like No Place for Hate or one of the other community-based programs?
Yes, very easy to do.
Then, I also had a question under sexual harassment, number 22. Because I note that under 19, that, the, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the- that under 19, it says, for example, which is just, which is harassment, threats, et cetera, that additional offenses says "and recommendation for expulsion." Under sexual harassment, it says "and possible recommendation for expulsion." And I was wondering why we seem to be taking sexual harassment less seriously than harassment?
I would suspect it's simply an oversight on our part. I, I do not believe that the committee meant any way to lessen the consequences for sexual harassment. Stern, is that, is that correct?
I noticed that in the third offense, in both cases, there is a possible recommendation for expulsion. But as far as the progressive consequences, it, it seems that we should be more consistent with those. What we would need to do is double-check the ed code sections, because harassment, threats, intimidation is 48900.4, and sexual harassment is 48900.2, and our recommendations need to be consistent with those ed code provisions.
Okay. The distinction I'm making, I, maybe you understand it, but I wanted to make sure it's clear to you, is that in the third offense or additional offenses for harassment, it doesn't say possible recommendation. It says recommendation for expulsion.
I understand.
And in number 22, it does say possible.
We'll take, we'll take a look at the language, whether that should be a possible or simply recommendation for expulsion.
And actually, while we're on number 22, under the first offense, other than suspension, there's no effort at rehabilitation.
For 22?
Yeah.
You'll notice that it says teen court services. That refers to an umbrella of services that are provided by CADA. And teen court services includes classes such as life choices, anger management, or it could be teen court peer review. So there is a whole suite of services that are available that are intended to be intervention services, that can be YSS and so on.
What, what programs does teen court offer that specifically address sexual harassment?
There is no particular service that says sexual harassment, but there are, like I said, life choices, conflict resolution, anger management. And they look at human interaction on a variety of levels and present various scenarios. But it seems, and I'm listening to the comments that the board is making, that we seek input from an appropriate stakeholder agency, such as the Rape Crisis Center or another group that could provide us some targeted services for this offense.
Right. Because I think, you know, sexual harassment can take so many forms. It wouldn't necessarily be manifested as anger or even aggression. It could be manifested in a variety of other ways that wouldn't necessarily fall under those umbrella courses.
Right. And that's why one of the teen court services that I had mentioned was the life choices class. And that, again, looks more at broad-spectrum human interaction, what's considered appropriate interactions with other people, and what's considered inappropriate.
So if we could maybe add those to both the first and second offense, that would be great. Sorry, then I had one final question on number 29, the very last one. I'm, I guess, maybe I need to be clear on what it means, misuse of computers and/or the internet. Because it doesn't seem, I, maybe I was, maybe I was reading too much into this. I was imagining not just, not just students, you know, accessing inappropriate sites, but actually maybe manipulating the computers in some way, such as maybe hacking or something like that. Which seemed like it would warrant a stronger response than simply they don't get to use computers. But I don't know if that's what's meant by this one or not.
Actually, you're correct. It covers an umbrella, everything from accessing pornography to sending hate emails to fooling around with servers and modifying grades. And you're absolutely correct. And depending on the severity of it, you're right. Probably a five-day suspension would not simply be appropriate. It could be a recommendation to expel. I, I want to make clear the point, and though it's not written on there, for a number, for quite a number of these offenses, a first-time offense could result in a recommendation to expel. But I don't think that perhaps that's clearly seen in the policy as written.
Let's go down the, Ms. Hart, do you have anything else?
No, I need to take this one.
Okay. Dr. Noel? Dr. Noel? Do you have anything? No?
What I really saw, and here's a point of clarification, is this a secondary district dress code and disciplinary policy? Or is it a center or school district's one? Because I don't see any elementary input, and I don't know if the elementary administrators have looked at it.
I, I will let Robin speak to the issue. But yes, this is case 12. Elementary principals have had an opportunity to review the document, and they are pretty unanimous in their support of the documents.
Because one thing that I know that some of our elementaries, in terms of the dress code, is that they don't allow spaghetti straps, but that's not mentioned in here. So are the elementary principals okay with letting go of that?
We didn't speak specifically about that. I don't think they're okay with letting go of that.
Okay. All right. So just on that specific one, I would like more information on that. And then, things like, obviously, there are lots of little things that come up in terms of discipline that aren't mentioned in here. Chewing gum comes, comes up constantly. I'm sure that that would just fall under something like not following directions or-
Correct.
Yeah.
Defiance.
Defiance. And then, coming back to, coming back to the internet, what can we do? I am, when we have kids that-
See, that's what I'm sitting here thinking about, from home computer to other computers, having nothing to do with the use of school computers, but everything to do with student discipline.
If you're harassing a classmate.
Well, that would be under harassment.
But if you're doing it from your home computer, I mean, what is that? You know, if you go onto Facebook and you say horrible things about somebody that you go to school with, what can a school do?
The, the general operating principle in school districts is if you can establish a nexus, i.e. a connection between the behavior even at home to a school, it is under the jurisdiction of the school. I think it was about a year ago, we provided the superintendent with some leads to an Orange County officer who probably has done the foremost work in, in the area of computer misuse. And we can bring forth those, and I think at the time, we actually suggested, and I think we made it to the board, to actually bring him to one of our board meetings and have him explain the state-of-the-art, so to speak, in computer misuse. And we can do that. We can bring him.
I guess, I guess my reaction to 29 has a lot to do with the consequences. So students suspended for five days, which could, you know, really upset their world. But loss of access for a specified time to a school computer for a lot of kids, who cares? You know, they, they have access to multiple computers at home. I, you know what I'm saying? I'm not sure that's a consequence. And I'm, I'm wondering if we should shift consequences over, teen court services or, you know, that sort of thing.
And for me, the last thing is, presumably, these tie, these would be exhibits tied to specific board policies on dress code. And I think it would be nice if the document reflected how, you know, which board policy it was, it was linked to.
I'll take a look at that, because this document was meant as a guideline for students and parents. I suspect we can do that, but let's let the committee study on making a document not unwieldy. I guess that's really what I'm referring to.
I mean, what I'm referring to is simply something that says, you know, up at the top, you know, CBP 51, whatever it is.
Okay. Got it.
So this is meant to be the thing, that which goes home to parents, or is that going to be something else?
This is the document that's meant to go home to students and parents, correct?
Okay. On the-
As well as administrators.
I just had a couple of things. On the first page, number six, the hats, I was glad to see hats, not on this part, but in the previous section. Hats in there for outside. It's a change. And then, on the very last page-
It's on the dress code.
That's okay. I was just complimenting it, nothing else. On the last page, it says, under notes, "No electronic devices, with the exception of calculators for in-class use," makes this, "are allowed to be seen or used on campus." I like the second sentence there about the loss of, that makes sense. But I'm, I mean, being realistic, that students bring cellphones to, to school. And my understanding is that high schools, they take them out between classes and call each other. Is that, Ms. Stern, is, is that correct?
What, the document you have before you is a proposed change to current policy and practice. Currently, students are allowed to bring cellphones to school, provided that they do not disrupt the educational process. This means they are to put, be put away during class time. Currently, students are allowed to use their cellphones before school, during passing periods at lunch and after school.
And this is proposing that we change that?
Yes, this is proposing a more restrictive policy.
That we not allow them to call between, and the reason is? Why?
Disruption to the educational process. Again, one of the, one distracting issue is when cellphones are stolen, it becomes something that's upheaval to a student's life. Unfortunately, we do need to deal with that on campus. When we have emergencies on campus, which luckily are very rare, but we have found our sheriff's deputies, our school resource deputies, have seen that emergency communication systems become overloaded when every student is taking out the cellphone and saying, oh, we're having an evacuation. And there are some concerns on it from school resource deputies, based on trainings that they have gone to, that there can be some modifications made to cellphones that could cause them to be a dangerous object on campus. Now granted, these cases are few and far between. Mostly, it's out of concern for disruption to the educational process. We have plenty of access to communication devices on campus for students. Every single classroom at San Marcos High School has a phone. If a student needs to call home to reach a parent, they can do so at any, at any time that it's not disrupting class. We have telephones available in the office where a student can call a parent. We have ways for parents to reach their students in emergencies. They can call any number of extensions at school and get a message to their students. So the cellphones, while they are definitely a help, there are other ways that students and parents can communicate with one another and remain in touch without those devices being on campus.
I'm, I, with high school students, I just am wondering whether that's realistic to believe they're going to leave their cellphones at home.
It's not at home. It says just away.
Away, not seen or used on campus. And at San Marcos this year, we have been very strict with iPods. We don't have students walking around in our halls this year with a little white headphones. We have said that these are a problem. They're distracting, they're disruptive.
That makes sense.
They're not to be seen or used on campus, and we've seen a tremendous shift in culture. And the interesting thing that comes out of that is that students communicate with one another more in the hallways, rather than being lost in their own little world with the headphones. They're actually chatting with one another again, walking down the halls. And it's nice to see students talking to the person next to them, not talking to the hand up by their ear.
I understand about iPods. They're also, you know, it's expensive, they're going to lose them, they're going to break them, and so forth. And I'm just, anybody else have a concern about cellphones?
My concern about the dress code and also about number one, just, just has to do with consistency of enforcement from one campus to another. I mean, I think that that's a big issue. I mean, clearly, you've created a culture at San Marcos regarding surrounding iPods and soon, cellphones, but it's not the same on every campus. And I, you know, you, I really hate going near a dress code or something like, you know, cellphones or iPods, unless there's a commitment to enforcing it.
I have a bit of a problem with number one, in that I don't like restricting behavior that's not problematic. And unfortunately- And unfortunately, I'd rather deal with the problematic behavior. So if there are students who are causing disruptions to the educational process by using their cellphones or listening to their iPods, I would think, I would rather deal with the students who are causing the disruption. And, I, I mean, I just imagine if a student is sitting at lunchtime, listening to his or her iPod, well, lying under a tree or something, I can't imagine why that would be a, a problem. If a student wants to make a phone call at lunchtime, it seems to me not a problematic behavior. And I, I guess I don't like instilling in students a feeling that, that school rules are capricious or arbitrary. And if I were a student who just wasn't causing any problems and wanted to make a phone call when I wasn't in class, it would seem capricious and arbitrary to me to be told that I couldn't.
I can understand where that comes from, again, with the primary responsibility for student safety. When a student is walking down the hallways during passing period, has the earphones in, and somebody needs to get through because there's an emergency, we can't, the student won't hear that they need to get out of the way because there's an emergency. If a campus safety assistant is coming through on the golf cart that we have, the student won't hear the horn. And we actually had cases of that last year. If our school resource deputy is calling out to the student, hey, wait up, I need to talk to you, or watch out, the student doesn't hear. So that's where the concern comes for student safety with the iPods. It's frustrating for me, too, that the behaviors of a few, such as cellphones being used during class time, which are disruptive, potentially limit the rights of the many that are behaving appropriately. But again, my primary concern as a site administrator is campus safety and preserving a safe and healthy culture on campus. And with the cellphones, also, they do become a disruption because students do take them out during class time. Students are using them during passing period. They're lingering on their phones when they're supposed to be moving on. If they're using a phone in a classroom, if they're using a phone in an office, there's an adult nearby who could say, hey, the bell rang, it's time to move on. And there is simply more adult monitoring of what's happening. We're not saying that students can't have these items, but we're saying between eight and three, your focus needs to be on school. Keep it turned off, put away, can't be seen or used on campus.
I think it speaks to school culture also. I mean, it sounds like you are trying to create an environment where the students are interacting with each other. And I certainly think that that's something that should be supported.
I think Mrs. Harder is absolutely right. There's a difference between being tough and being arbitrary and capricious. You can have a tough rule, you can have a soft rule, but enforcement's everything. Enforcement's everything. If, inconsistent enforcement's everything. And I think that's where some of our campuses are having problems. Big time. I finally figured, I've been touting fundamental schools for a while since I've been doing research on them. And finally figured out what fundamental school means. It simply means enforce the rules. And, and it's interesting, because it's easy to say that, but there's a pretty high overhead cost that goes with it. Because you have to, you have to keep records and you have to follow through. If there's a consequence, someone has to make sure that the consequence happens. And if someone's supposed to, if a kid's supposed to be someplace to suffer a consequence, they have to be there. And I get the, I was told that by a school that has a remarkable record for disadvantaged kids, the best in the state of California middle school, middle school, assistant principal says to work here, you have to be an anal compulsive, because everything is detailed. All things are maintained, all records are kept, and all rules are enforced, no exceptions. And I said, well, how long does that keep going? After a while, they get used to it. But, but when it's new, it's very hard.
Okay, well, we'll see this again, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Because the defibrillators, we want to get that done, and it's short. I'm going to go back to that, and then we're going to go to the consent agenda, and then we're, we're going to be done. So, is there anything, this is...
Robin Swaskin will make this presentation.
Okay, here we go. So you've seen the board policy and the administrative regulation in there for the use of them. The exact board policy, of course, is under healthcare and emergencies, 5141. And the first part talks about resuscitation orders and all. And then on the backside of the board policy, it talks about the automated external defibrillators.
I just, I just have a threshold question. Do we even have any defibrillators on our campuses? Okay.
Yes.
And people are trained to use the defibrillators?
And we have some that are not on the campuses because, because we don't have a policy in place.
That's why we're doing tonight.
We pulled them, we pulled them all, and we were, they were donated. And so we want to make sure that since we have them, we're using them, and we're using them appropriately. So just very briefly, the board policy first, the board authorizes the placement. Superintendent develops the guidelines, which includes receiving training, the employees, and then the fact that the authorization of the AEDs in the district shall not be deemed to create a guarantee or an obligation to use the AED, and those are important pieces in the board policy. And then, following up with the administrative regulation, I did notice a typo in here, and maybe you did as well. On the very back page, it doesn't have anything to do with the AEDs, but it just kind of drops off, it says, any person 18 years of, or older at the top, the right to consent or to refuse, period. And then down below, school-related medical care, it should all be, I don't know. Yeah, the title, yeah, right. So somehow that got spread apart. But the important part then, again, of course, is right at the bottom, where it's the specifics about when an automated external defibrillator is placed at the school. The principal or designee shall ensure that. And then the list of, the employees receive the brochure with the contents and style. And that's important because we have different models, and that's going to happen. As, just like technology, things get better and they improve, and new ones get donated and such. So we'll have to make sure that we have the proper use for each one. And the American Heart Association and the American Red Cross is their important resources for it, with the information posted right next to the AED. And then, of course, the employees are noticed annually on the location. And then the principal, again, designates which employees will have, will be available to respond during the school time, and then also school-sponsored activities. What's not included in this and needs to be, and I know that Joanne Polley is working with the nurses and other people, is the actual plan for implementation. This is just the board policy and the administrative regulation, which is one piece of it. And I, unfortunately, I, I wasn't able to speak with Joanne today, so I'm not quite sure where that plan is. But that will need to come back immediately with another reading on this. So questions on board policy, administrative regulations, they're fairly straightforward.
I'm so glad to see this, because I know that nurses have been anxious about this for quite a long time.
Yes.
So, yay.
Thank you. I think that's it.
Okay, so that's the first reading, and we'll come back with it, with the plan.
Okay, I am so sorry that we're not getting to our board policies here in, in F6.
I'm sorry, I missed the speaker card.
Oh. On the defibrillator or?
Yes.
I think on the defibrillator.
Yes, we have Mr. Lane Wheeler.
Hi, Lane Wheeler, again. I find it shocking that the, just the Center for Teachers Association wasn't noticed about this in advance, because I, I think there are some very serious complications and potential liabilities for employees volunteered to do this kind of thing, where the state has issued some legal opinions about who can administer tests for insulin, I mean, determining insulin for diabetes, and something as simple as a stick to determine sugar values. This seems much more serious, and I, I would like to have a stronger legal opinion on what the liability is and to guarantee that there would be no liability to any employee that would be in a volunteer capacity to administer this. I think this is going well beyond the capacity of a non-trained person. And even the volunteer training that might be accompanying this, I, I think we need to know more than just how to turn it on and how to do it. It, you know, making a determination if someone needs this kind of intervention. To me, you need to be, have some medical training well beyond that, that you might get from a nurse along the lines of an EpiPen or, or something like that. So before this is, becomes board policy, I'd like to have a district legal opinion on it and also to have the teachers association weigh in on this, too. Thank you.
And thank you. I would just like to chime in that about, I think the studies I've seen have shown that about 50% or so of high schools now have automated defibrillators in them. But, you know, obviously, they can save somebody's life, but they definitely could be a liability issue. So I very much appreciate what Mr. Wheeler has to say.
If we could go back to the consent agenda to D1. I don't know who pulled.
I pulled that one. I pulled D1 because it's two sets of minutes. And the second one has board members absent Robert Noel. And Dr. Noel was actually there for most of the meeting and left. You know, he missed, I think, the last quarter of the meeting. And so I'm just not sure how it works when he was actually there for most of the time. He wasn't present for one of the votes, but, the vote at the end, but... So how does that get worded normally? Present, absent?
Then he was present.
Present. Okay.
Let's make that change.
All right, so move to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes from Tuesday, November 13th and Thursday, November 15th, 2007. And, sorry, Thursday, November 15th, 2007.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Not hearing any, passes 5-0. The other one that was pulled was D9.
I have my question answered. I wanted to know how do we spend all this money when we're having a spending freeze?
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. Everybody, I'm too tired. It's 5-0, passed. Oh, yeah, who seconded that? Okay, we go back to the end. Coming events, we've gone through that. Is that correct? Board correspondence, anybody have any board correspondence? Board comments? Future agenda items, how about future, what happened to future meetings?
That would be under future agenda items. The board, I believe, is expecting a meeting on next Tuesday, February 19th.
Closed session.
It would be closed session. There may be an open session item. I'll talk to Craig Price in advance. But it would be 5:00 next Tuesday. And let me ask you, board, do you want to schedule a special meeting just to deal with board policies? We could, for example, pick the first Tuesday in March.
I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, that would work.
Be so happy.
And we could bring in the seven...
Happy is the wrong word.
Happy, happy. Content.
Your, your husband has a sudden vacation that she sees appearing in her future?
I'm not positive if I'm going to be here on that, on that Tuesday. I just, I can't picture my, my calendar.
Shall we send out an email?
That would be great. Thank you.
Because it could also be the 18th, the other Tuesday in March. Oh, okay, that's right. Okay, well, we'll get back to that. Anything else? Were any other comments? No? Means adjourned.